We'll.
It was the.
We'll start and we'll start.
That one and then this.
Three fifteen.
Eight fifteen, we'll start and get moving. Stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda. Anything to add to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Minutes, I don't have my notes with anyone have any corrections, additions?
I had one. On page two of five, right under auditor treasure report. The first one, motion second to approve the reallocation of funds for the final museum payment by increasing the special general fund payment to a hundred thousand to keep a fund balance in the recorder's. Should we put in the amount total of the special general fund, which was like one fifty, wasn't it? Yeah. Should that be in there instead of raising it a hundred, just from, just say, increasing the special general fund payment to a hundred and fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand was our agenda.
Yes. I added a hundred, so it would make it a total of one fifty. That's all I had.
Yes, it probably should've stated a little bit clearer.
Yeah.
Re-allocation of funds. To the, maybe we could reword that, special, to reallocation of the funds to increase the special general fund by one hundred thousand dollars. No, by increasing the special general fund, okay. To make the, well, we're doing two things in that one sentence and it's confusing.
It is.
We should probably say reallocating. The payment, reallocating the payment to the museum by, from, for one hundred thousand from special general fund and one fifty from museum. Which is, or, and then state which is a reallocation. Is that better?
It's not right, because it's, it increased it, it increased, the special general fund contribution was fifty thousand, we increased it to one fifty.
By another hundred thousand.
By another hundred thousand. I think we have to clarify that, that's up to one fifty, not just, to me, if you read it just.
It, we didn't increase our, our allocation. We, we didn't increase.
Increase the total amount.
No, we did not increase the total amount. We, it was all supposed to come from the recorders fund.
Yes.
And now it's, one hundred thousand is coming from the special reserve fund.
That one hundred thousand.
Yes, and fifty from the recorders.
And fifty from the special, and the fifty more from the special general.
No.
Yes, there, the actual payment is three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, so there's still money coming from the recorders fund, I believe that was sixty seven thousand.
Yep.
And then there's another payment coming out of another one of the recorders funds, but our total payment is three hundred and sixty seven thousand, and I can get the breakdown from the last finance minutes where it states. But, yes, the recorder did not have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in her fund, so we asked to reallocate a hundred thousand dollars from special general, which only left her payment out of that fund as fifty thousand.
Right, so we reduce, the motion was to, was the motion to make the payment or not?
Was to increase from the special general by a hundred thousand, the payment was already set, but the source of the payments changed.
So this is only a motion to reallocate.
Yes.
One hundred thousand dollars in place of one hundred thousand dollars from recorders.
Correct, correct.
So maybe, maybe we just keep it that simple.
Just keep it that simple, yeah.
Which, which is, which is done to.
You made it too confusing.
I know, I made it too confusing. I did.
So, yes, it was, it is confusing. Anything else?
Nope, I didn't have anything on.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Erica.
I'll second.
Dave, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Is the regular claims auditor warrants over ninety days, human services, public health and transit.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard, any discussant, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Open forum, anyone on open forum, Nate?
He's here for the zoning.
Okay. No, we, if you're, if, if you can't make it to zoning, we'll, otherwise we'll, you can, you can, okay? Okay, reports and correspondence.
I can go first. At, we had our E D A meeting, we continued to talk about our local, our housing funding that we have, we're considering starting a local housing trusting fund. We discussed the R F P to go out for our H R A management services, that was published the first. Our, the contract with M M C D C ends the end of the year, so we are hoping to make a decision on that in November to bring to the board the first meeting in December. Had a Mahoubi Atwa meeting, we talked about their fast track program, they were able to disburse two million dollars in grant funding to people through the five county district to help in all communities with housing. Their head start is full, and they are also working with the First Lutheran Church, they, First Lutheran Church had gotten a federal homeless grant to help with hotel motel vouchers for people experiencing homelessness, and Mahoubi is going to be administering that grant. Then I had the Becker County Extension, four H enrollment is up forty seven from twenty one, twenty two. They have twenty eight master gardens, gardeners, and they seen an overall increase in participation at the fair. We also discussed the transit building and the possible extension moving over there, and really it was an overall, again, no. And, and really what that, they, they just feel it's a safety issue, and I did tell them that we will likely just at least look at the property, see what we can do, see before we make a decision, but they are concerned that maybe we would need some security, they don't, because it's back. In the, in the fairgrounds, there's no other businesses or people around that they feel it's a safety concern for the two people that will be working in the office. So, that's my reports.
One thing with extension two, I think we have to really, really thank our volunteers. We have such a high volunteer base in Becker County and Extension, the master garden program is, is very successful, the four H volunteers and, and the other discussion that we had too was the livestock committee, you know, very, very high volunteer rate at the, at our fair in livestock, and we had, I think we determined that, and I said, I would like to have a meeting with, try to coordinate what the, what the role of our four H extension person will have at the, during the livestock, what they can, what they can and can't do, or because of four H, but a lot of money's donated to local four H, nothing's donated to the state four H, so I'm gonna see if I can get with Cecilia and Dean Bergen and have a conversation at A M, when we go down to A M C and have our, Cecilia probably won't be there, but anyway, that will, hopefully we can ease some of those tensions, and he was there, but you know, he was just observing. I didn't see some of the other commissioners at the auction though observing their checkbook or wallet was stuck tightly in their.
Which auction?
The livestock auction for four H.
I was in Olympia, Washington.
Well, I tried calling you to see if I could get some money for you, and you didn't answer your phone.
Yeah, well, I, I put that in the glove box and.
Good for you.
Lock it, yeah, and it works really good that way.
Yeah, good, good. Do you want to touch base, the benefits committee, we had a couple meetings there, and we will, we will come with a recommendation today, so we had a real good, real good dialogue and discussion.
I'll go next. So I didn't have a historical society meeting, but I want to make a plug for the haunted house at the old jail. It'll be the twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty ninth of October from six thirty to nine thirty, so, and then also just a reminder that we still have the Da Vinci exhibit, it's really cool, so go look at it, it's, it's an.
What are the dates that's running the Da Vinci?
Da Vinci goes until Janu, right now till January, uh, seventh, okay, perfect, yeah, anyway, somewhere around there. So, and it started September nineteenth. Or September twentieth, I guess, on Sunday was the open. So now, they are now open on Sunday from twelve to four because, because of the Da Vinci exhibit too. All right, next one, courthouse meeting, Barry and I had a courthouse meeting, we talked about a few things that are on the agenda also, but one thing that was brought up in, in our administrative report was the, they want to possibly get a picnic table on the north end of the courthouse, there used to be a little park there before we added the.
Yeah, I think that might be what I was, we're gonna ask.
And we talked about if we were gonna have a picnic table there, we wanted to have a nice cement slab and make it nice and not, just kinda.
There's not a lot of room there.
Not a lot, but.
Take a look at it, see if you, see what you think for, you know, for next year looking.
See if we can look and see.
One thing that was brought up is that, about being at smoking or non-smoking, I said I was not gonna be in favor of anything if it was a smoking spot, I mean, I, it should be a non-smoking area. Sorry smokers, any of you who started smoking again recently?
I don't know.
Anyone in this room? Not, not, not catering to the smoking.
Then we, then we had a report from Brent, our, our, on our new boilers was being put in actually the day we had the meeting of the courthouse meeting, and it's probably all up and running right now, ready to go. The fill, flush and strainers will be replaced on October ninth, that's when they're going to do that.
There may be a short.
Short.
Gap in heat.
Heat, yeah. He wasn't, he was, he wasn't really worried about it because there are other ways to heat the building for a couple days, you think, so.
Someone online has, is not muted, if you could maybe, well, there was some.
I heard it.
And then we also talked about a wellness, there's a, there's a grant for a wellness room that we, have we, we got the grant or we applied for it or?
We applied for it and we've received it, and actually the, the H R director will be talking about the actual room that, when, when it's up.
Okay, so she'll, she'll talk about it, so we'll, we'll let her bring that up then. Then we also talked, there are two part-time custodial slash maintenance positions that have not been filled, and they're not even really remotely close to being filled, so we had, we had talked to Brent about doing some investigating on if it's possible to turn those into a full, one full-time position and if, if it's necessary and the probability of doing.
Are those for the courthouse?
Um, it's.
And human.
And human services, so it would be a, it could be a person that works both here and there on, on different days.
And their evening.
And their evening shifts, yeah, yeah.
And that would reduce, it'd reduce hours.
It would reduce hours by eight hours.
But we said, you have no one right now, it's, it'll be an increase, but.
Yeah.
The cost of that we anticipate would be about ten thousand for the increase.
Benefits.
Because you're, you're losing hours, which would save you money, but.
Yeah. Is there anything else on?
The veteran.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the veterans office, um, it's in the, it's on the, it's in your report, I think, isn't it?
No, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I thought.
It's in the packet.
Okay. So next we had, I had a fair board meeting, and after the fair, after this fair, the food court manager Doug Hanson, who's done it since, geez, two thousand and one, maybe, somewhere around there, he is retiring, he's not working anymore, maybe it's two thousand eleven, and.
It's eleven.
Yeah, I think it's eleven. And anyway, the, the guy that, I can't remember the guy's name now, that worked for him, is going to take over the business, so the fair board decided to stay with that manager, but the one thing they were really concerned about was that in the past, they haven't had a lot of local vendors being able to get into the fair and, and sell things, so they're going to, with their, their, want to have the, the same company do, do the work, but they want to also be able to allow local vendors to come in, so. They're, that, they wanna, they wanna make sure there's a couple, two or two to three spots available for local vendors to.
The vendors follow the fair, the, the, the rides, I mean, are they, do they go together?
No, no. Some of, some, a couple of them do, but most of them are contracted by this company that he, that come in there and, and they pay a percentage to, they, they pay a percentage to him, and then he pays a percentage to the fair board for, for the usage, yeah. So it's, uh, it, it actually works out really well, the only, the only thing that they were concerned is there wasn't enough local people that, because people would come in and want to be, they would talk to the fair board, want to come in and be part of the fair to sell, you know, to make money and sell their products, and then they would always get a no because there was no, there was no room, while they, they want to remedy that situation to allow those people. And then Amy Sterns came from Project Four Twelve to talk about the best chocolate chip cookie, cookie contest at the fair, and I think they had fifty two different cookies entered. Wow. And so the judges got to eat a lot of cookies, and it went really well. Next year they want to do a salsa contest, so, best salsa in Becker County, but it's kind of something cool and fun that would be.
It'd be hot.
It would be hot, yeah. And then we, we talked about the transit usage of the, the extension too, and Kevin Olson came and he basically expressed all your guys' concerns. Um, then I had.
No, you shouldn't say your guys, it's some people's.
Extensions.
Extensions concerns, I should say, yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, you're correct. Um, then I had a transit meeting, um, the budget is in good shape, where his, his actual budget is used, is at sixty eight percent for the year currently, so that's really good. His rider ships were up six point two three percent from last year in August, and I believe he just sent out an email a couple days ago that said his rider ships were up five, five, five and a half percent for September, yeah. Um, he's also made a request to the state to pay out the utilities from the transit budget when they were in the highway building in July, because they didn't pay any lease payment in July, so he, he, he's pretty, he's pretty confident that they'll accept it, but he, they may not because, because it's not, it's not, they weren't actually in there paying the lease, so I did, they'll, they'll see, otherwise he'll, he has funds that will pay that in his, out of his reserves. And he's also checking to see the, the, the disposal, the disposal of the building is taking a while because the, there's paperwork at the federal government that is not being, it hasn't been probably looked at, I suppose, yet. So he's checking to see if they actually need the federal government to approve anything in order for them to depose the buildings. So he's checking in that, and if that's the case, then we could do that, like, right away, because it's all, everything's all ready to go, and then, and then so forth. I think that's about it. Oh, there was one more thing, the state, so they're having a lot of issues, the, the state of Minnesota has an old accounting system they use for, for transit, and it doesn't really match up with any newer technology, like, for example, QuickBooks, it doesn't really match up with that, so they're trying to see if the state can change that, and he's done a lot of things, Kevin has done a lot of things to try to change that, and so he's, maybe, maybe we could talk to the A M C, or we could talk to some of our local legislatures to see if they can maybe say something or do something or get some, because it might need, it might require legislation to change that situation. So he was, we were just kind of threw some ideas out. Do you have anything else in transit or?
No, I couldn't make.
Yeah, yeah. And then I went to, then I had a D A C meeting, so we, we gotta, they're going to replace a bunch of carpet in one of the, they're gonna replace flooring in one of the rooms, it's, they're doing steadily, doing things at the D A C that are making it, the parents look better, they're getting new vehicles, so things are starting to, they're starting to update a lot of things, so it's that, that's actually good. They're actually going to purchase two new fleet cars, they're used, but they're all, but they're way better than the hundred and ninety thousand miles they have on the other two, so, so that's a, that's a positive thing. Um, we're, the board is also looking at hiring, or they're going to eventually post a job for a full-time office slash financial manager. Currently they have a part-time finance person, and they want to have a full-time person that will be able to do both of those things, and so hopefully that works out well. Hopefully the job gets posted this week. And then another, of course, what we brought up at our joint governance meeting this morning, the, the safe and sick leave, and we had, we have talked about a lot of the county, they are also affected by that January first, so. And I got one more, then I don't have to talk anymore. Barry and I had a Sunnyside meeting, I, I missed part of the meeting, I had technological difficulties, it was, it wasn't good. But anyway, basically, the part I was there for, we, we talked about, they're having trouble finding a night, night staff, like a nurse and a C N A, so they're going to, it was three dollars an hour, I believe they were gonna offer each one of those more, more to.
Great, differential pay.
Differential pay.
For like night, night?
Night, night.
Overnight?
Overnight, yeah. And, um, they also unfortunately have a COVID outbreak at Sunnyside, so we were on a Teams meeting, that's why I was having technological difficulties.
And Ashley had some difficulties too, because we didn't meet anywhere, it was all Teams, and, um, the, the cases are not, COVID's going around very rampant, I think, in the communities, and most of us don't even know it, because it's most, it's kind of like a cold, and, and I think a lot of people haven't recognized it, so if you're sniffling, you have a chance you're, you're in a COVID, but very, it doesn't seem like it's very, you know, it's not a serious outbreak, so even those at the nursing home just had minor symptoms, aches, pains and runny nose and, you know, tired, so that's the good news. Hopefully we don't have any more different strains that are more severe, but they also got their year end, we had a good, we, we were profitable, and the budget for next year is, shows a profit of, can't remember, seventy, eighty thousand.
I think it was seventy.
Something like that. So we approved the budget, we also changed our auditing, auditing firm from C L A to, I can't remember the name of the other one.
Oh, I got it.
It was a cost savings, and we just thought it was time to, time to change that up. Richard, I had N R M, and I have my notes here. Obviously we know that the, the shelter is, is something that we're gonna have to probably build in the same footprint, basically, so we're looking for some, just some updates from our architect on that.
Found a dinosaur bone.
You know.
Well, yeah, wasn't it?
It could be a chicken bone.
Chicken bone, we're not sure.
So they're gonna do some more analysis.
Either way.
Maybe it was a dinosaur chicken, I don't, we don't know.
I'm not sure, but we're gonna have to.
So we, we can't, yeah, we can't move outside that footprint because of something. We're, you know, the, the parking is an issue where it's at, and if we're gonna expand, you can maybe expand just a little bit, but then it might hurt our parking there, so we were looking at parking, and if you know that one building is a Pelican River watershed building, I think they had some interest in us moving it for them to further along, but I don't think, at least I insinuated, I'm not interested in expending any money to move their building. It's not, I don't know if it's worth moving. As you know, the four twelve project is, is looking at setting a trowel up out there, they had a site picked to cross that, but they, they, now they're gonna, they want to put it on the trail between fifty nine and Dunton Locks in, on the trail, off the trail overlooking that lake, so that, we thought that was a, that was fine. I think you might have got this, but the staff prepared a le, letter to the D N R, now that they got additional funding to offset the costs that we are, we are maintaining some of their accesses, so they sent a letter for, a bill, basically, a request for funding for nineteen thousand, one hundred and six dollars for twenty four, for us to continue mating, maintaining their forty one state-owned public accesses that the county does. So we're asking that they do that, we've been doing this in kind historically, and ask that they give us back that money. Looking at, working on an agreement to allow Woods and Wheels A T V Club to widen existing trail on tax forfeit lands near Wolf Lake Cemetery, and ask for us to look at an ordinance to allow, you know, on an A T V, you have to have an ordinance that will allow them to ride on the road when there's, when it's not accessible in the ditch bottom for them, so we're looking at an ordinance to allow them to drive, to pop up on the road shoulder when they, in that spot, otherwise they can get ticketed. North Country Trail is looking, association is looking to acquire some land. To, to allow some overnight camping for hikers, and they can do that on ours, but on tax for land, but we don't have, but where they want it is on the, what was it, little stream or river, they want overlooking, there's a couple private landowners, they just want a couple acres, and they had to allow us to manage it, and. We had a lengthy discussion of the, the court case, Tyler versus Hennepin County, the, about tax forfeit land, they are, Mary's preparing all the sales to, and reporting that, they're up to fifteen years back, they're looking at, going back and looking at the, the, and I don't think, I don't think Becker County has many, and I don't think we had much profit of any. But one thing that this has done at, at the legislative now is there's a lot more discussion about having a super fund, so when there's a loss of revenue, so like we have some big cases here, Frazee had the turkey plant that was tax forfeit, there was a, the elevator in Lake Park that burned, I mean, just on the elevator, we were on the hook for over fifty thousand for cleanup on that, and, and that came out of tax forfeit monies. Luckily we had, got some deed money for the turkey plant, you know, quite a few years ago that helped offset some of those costs, but there's some of these, and there's another, the furniture store in Frazee was. So there's a lot of these big structures that end up just going tax forfeit that the county then is on the hook for. So there's, now there's been some talk about maybe there should be a super fund, if you, if you're not gonna be able to profit on anything, then there's gotta be a super fund. And I, I do agree, I don't think the county should be profiting from, especially the case, was a little old lady that didn't understand the tax, so I mean, there's, there's those things, so. But that's, that's this ongoing discussion. There was a utility easement discussion.
Oh.
The one about.
Yeah, they're looking, trying to get power in through tax forfeited land down there, on that trail.
And we gave the township easement on it, so we're, we're questioning whether we, how, how to protect ourselves on giving easements even for power, it should be within that, within that township road easement, so we're kind of looking into that, don't wanna, we don't want to hurt ourselves for future, I mean, I don't think we're gonna develop it, but if you have road improvements and all of a sudden you gotta ask someone to go into their easement, well, then you're, then you're liable for. Anything else to N R M?
No.
Had Lake Agacy Regional Library. We discussed it at this morning's meeting about the, the library over at the city, the city is putting on new roof, the city's oblig, you know, the city's structure, but that's a historic building, so they gotta be careful what they, they, what, they have to get permission to even work on the roof, and they're gonna try to put a membrane underneath. And they had discussion about, one discussion we had about the Laurel offices, now with the, with the city of Morehead approving their ta, sales tax for, and that includes the Laurel offices, and I, you know, I brought up the point, you know, we're not, you know, they, Morehead has been very generous on their, their cost to, to rent office space. on their, their cost to, to rent office space in the current library. It's been, they've been more than generous. Um, and if they're even remotely close to that, we'll continue that relationship. But if it happens to be a very high number, I said, you might, we might have to look outside the building. I mean, I'm sure they're going to be reasonable, but the other thing is we're then liable for furnishing, furnishings, the new office space. So there are just some things that we just, you just don't assume you're moving into that new space because if the costs are too much, you might have to look elsewhere. Lakeland Mental Health, it was our first month that had, we had a, a small loss for the month. And what, first one for about four years. Um, August is usually a month that they do, that are, that they are low. Both the kids going back to school and things start transitioning back. But, um, the psychiatry is what, they, they had the turnover of the psychiatry and that turnover, then it takes a while to get back those clients. Um, we were at a profit. Now psychiatry's traditionally been the, the low point, the, the least, um, the, just doesn't make money. In the last couple of years, we, we've been profitable, about a three percent profit. And, um, so that's, you gotta keep an eye and make sure we're going in the right direction. We also met, Denise and I met with Lakeland Mental Health over here in Detroit Lakes office. After, you know, Morehead, Morehead is being renovated and built on. And Detroit Lakes is the next office space that they're looking at making improvements. And we're not sure what yet, but, um, we also discussed on the relationships with Becker County and, and Lakeland and seeing how we can improve it. And I don't know, Lakeland sponsored a mental health awareness with the city, with the school on a, was it a soccer game? And, uh, with Fergus Falls, so two, two communities that are both in Lakeland Mental Health, but they, I think they gave T-shirts and it was a, it was a mental health aware, awareness. And I think, and I really think mental health awareness is maybe even better than cancer awareness and for, for youth. Because, you know, you, when you're young, you know, there's not many kids that, hopefully not many kids affected by cancer, but not many that are, um, have cancer. But mental health, these, I think a lot of kids need to be, and it's, release the, or remove the stigma of, of negative.
And the biggest, one of the biggest problems that youth have right now is, is their mental health.
Yeah.
That's the biggest issue they have.
So I thought that was a great, great thing. And I'm going to try to push that maybe Frazee and Lake Park ought to have, you know, have a mental health awareness night like they do with cancer awareness. So, um, some, some really good, uh, um, discussion on that. I think that's it. I think I had seven meetings in one week. It was just brutal, but I think we covered them all for now. Anything, John?
Well, just over a quick, uh, airport committee meeting. The airport staff is going to review all and inspect all hangars to make sure their renters have their airplane licenses up to date. And mainly is that, that they're not just using that hangar for their personal storage.
Right.
Other stuff. Because we got waiting lists of people that want to get in there with active.
And there's no requirement for fuel purchase or anything?
No, but they, they do. But you got, in the past, there's been some old airplanes that, uh, hadn't been licensed or inspected for years. They're just storing an old plane while.
And it's, it's very, very reasonable price, though.
Yeah, we did increase them a little, but, uh, given we got quite a waiting list, we want to get those burned. And the city's staff is handling all that.
Well, I would even suggest you have to have a minimum fuel purchase from site or something.
Have that, yeah. We're just, year, yearly, we're cracking down on the ones that just, some are just business. Mine just rented one for storage because they're cheap.
Well, don't tell me that, that's.
But now we're, we're phasing those out. The two thousand nineteen, it's about an eleven million dollar grant that we got for the airport extension runway. It's finally being closed out. It just takes forever with the feds and the state to get those finally closed out. It is updated this morning. The fuel system is under construction out to the underground piping is completed. And some of the parking lot will be completed yet this year with paving. The old hangar demo is scheduled in October with the new hangar bids being let probably this winter. Had a Prairie Lakes Minnesota solid waste meeting, one of the shorter meetings I've had down there. Main thing we're working on, how can we process our ash that's going to the landfill there between Perm and New York Mills? For using in road base projects. And we're working, we're thinking about taking a thousand ton down the pole. For their ash cleanup, they got quite a recycling and we're, and they'll keep track of all the ferrous, non-ferrous materials and see what kind of revenue we generate from that. And, uh, continue working on a project where we can use it in a road base. You got, you have to use it right underneath asphalt, mix it in the classified base, so to speak. And we're working, we're, it's kind of set up by committee and for some reason I was put on that to kind of be involved.
It said road, right?
Involved with the, moving that project forward and stuff.
There's no long-term liability with that ash in the road bases there, there's?
No, it's, it's controlled by MPCA.
Right, but I mean, there, it's, once it's in the road base, it's.
Cleaned up and, because, because right now it's going in the Perm landfill and it's mountains of it there. And we don't have a lot of room storage left and it's very expensive to keep adding cells. So this will be one, one use each for it. Uh, Pol County, Accroson has been using it for quite a few years. Uh, there's incinerators, so. We'll keep working on that. As far as the burners, there was a little outage, but, uh, still scheduled to burn fifty, uh, fifty-five thousand tons or more this year. So there'll be a little downtime for maintenance here and one of the units coming up later this month. Richard and I had environmental meeting, uh, reviewed, refined the solid waste assessments on the agenda for further discussion today. What are our options for transportation, for transporting solid waste, you know? Where we're going to Fargo, we're going to Perm, how can we work with Clay County and, and transferring some of the stuff so we're not going empty one way and so we can haul load it both ways? And I, I think we got a meeting again coming up and the city of Fargo is finally getting involved. In the past, the person they had working with solid waste always said no. Well, the, the new city administrator has gotten involved at Fargo and he says, I think we can work something out here.
Well, we could save a lot of money if we would work together, so. Because they're shipping waste down here and we're shipping waste up there.
For the colony.
Doesn't make any sense.
Four thousand bucks a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to require some capital outlay, but we're, we're looking into that. But, uh, city, and even eventually City of Morehead with their recyclables probably coming this way to our facility. And so continuing talks with them and, but it. Me and Becker County are going to have to purchase several trailers and probably one DCAB, tractor, semi. So we're looking into pricing and I think we got a meeting coming up with a vendor on trailers that talk about it. So it's still in the works and we'll keep you updated as it goes on. So it's about all I had.
I had environmental, John, he's covered that and EDA with Erica and she covered that, so. I'm, I'm good. I don't have anything else.
And NRM with me.
And NRM with you. That was the highlight of my week. But, you know, you gotta just try and move on from stuff like that. It's like when your vacation is over, but so.
It's good to get home though, isn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, anything else under commissioners? We're starting to get notice of the AMC conference. That's the first, um, week of December, is it?
Fourth, fifth and sixth, so.
Fourth, what is that? Is that?
It's, uh.
I think it's, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
And if I could, Commissioner Nelson, we, as a board, you did approve the schedule. So the twelfth and the nineteenth will be your regular board meetings. So you'll all be able to attend that.
Yes, fourth, fifth and sixth is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
That's why, because we always have conflict.
Yep.
Yeah.
It starts on Sunday night.
Yeah, MRC will be Sunday night, I'm sure. Okay, um, we have, uh, Lakes Country Service Cooperative. Oh, I don't know. Did you have something for a public forum?
No, I'm just.
He's there for zoning.
Yeah. I didn't think, I didn't think you were here for. Yes, the Lakes Country Service Cooperative appointment, or they're asking, they're requesting a board member?
Right, they had sent a letter.
Or requesting a.
Yeah, page eleven. And, and again, I don't know if you've had a board member there before, but they were just reminding you that, uh, you're a member of their cooperative and they have some openings. And are you interested?
I, I would like to entertain a motion to allow any commissioner to appoint, to make an application. And if they are successful, that we would pay a, um, per diem, per diem.
Per diem in my life.
If, if anyone's interested. I don't know if no one's interested, but you can think about it and, and it's, they, they are the ones that choose the person. So, um, if you are successful, that we would get a per diem from the board.
Could I offer something, Commissioner Nelson? The, as I read through this, and we actually went through the website, but I, I, it reads that, um, a membership would come from one of you as county commissioners. They have, they have county commissioners and, and elected officials on there.
I thought there, I thought I read.
Did I read that correctly? I thought that's what we read through it on that. And, uh, and so I think that's what the, the membership is, is our USA.
Says that the terms are for city, county or other governmental agency.
Yeah.
It says if your agent wishes to nominate one of your board members, you, you submit a candidate, you submit the petition and along a resume, resume of the candidate. Then the ballots will be mailed out to our membership November eighth for them to decide. So I think if anyone's, I don't think we get to appoint someone.
Well, I don't think you get to appoint, but it has to be one of you, yeah.
That's what I interpreted what you said.
That's what you meant, okay, sorry, man.
So some, so if somebody wants to do it, we could nominate them next board meeting if they want to.
Well, I, I think it, I don't know if we need to nominate, because there's other people that will apply for it that aren't nominated from.
Yeah.
There's a nomination petition to send along with it, that by here it's resolved that the organization name nominates.
If anyone wishes to.
Individual.
Yes, if we, then we can, we can add our, so what, what we need to do is if you're interested, we can support with, through that, through that nomination. Right? But if you're, if you're interested, bring it back to the next board meeting. Or if you're interested now, we can offer a letter of support if anyone's interested. Or we can, you can think about it to our next meeting and, unless someone knows now. Richard, will you wish to me?
I'm gonna think about it, Barry. I'll sleep on it. And I'll let you know.
We got time on the seventeenth, yeah.
You have till the seventh.
Okay, that's good.
Commissioner Nelson, would you like us to bring that back under the appointments?
Only if someone, if someone.
If someone, maybe, if one of us are interested, we let Pat know. And then if, so we can.
Yeah, so we can get a nomination letter of support.
Sounds good.
Great, Pat.
Yeah, and let's just touch on what you talked about. There's the conference, AMC conference. I think we've registered everyone that has an interest in going. Is there any questions on that? I believe, uh, we've communicated with everyone. I think we have four.
Yep.
Commissioners that are going. Uh, Christopher Verberg hasn't decided yet, or have you decided?
I haven't decided.
Not to go. And, and, and so we've got that all taken care of for you. Now, we do have alternates that are on the AMC delegate list that you approved at the beginning of the year. Each of you, I think, go to a particular legislative meeting. Is the board comfortable with us reaching out to the alternates to see if they can fill in the one meeting that Commissioner Verberg will not be going to?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty informal. There's usually nothing, I mean, to be voted on. We would have a voting member. Um, if he chooses not to, if you choose not to go, let, let us know and we can, someone else can fill that. But I think, I think we, it's changed now. I think we can all go to any meeting and, and we'll have one vote. I think we're all alternates and.
You, you actually can't, Commissioner Nelson, you're absolutely right. Yeah, sometimes it, they coincide with each other. We're just putting that out there.
It used to be, it used to be different that you did, you, it could only be at your one meeting, but they loosen that up, so.
I think I'd like to see, so our department has, like, county engineer, probably even, uh, human services partake in some of the, those two. I know this is, state engineers all meet at a separate time down there to involve some agenda items and bring that forward to transportation policy and stuff. So nice to have voice in it.
So you're just asking an extension out to our department heads if they're interested in telling them to. Especially if, especially if they're. Especially if they're.
For that time, that day or.
If their organization meets at the same time. I know planning and zoning does and, um, I don't know if Patty ever went. I don't think she ever went down to the AMC.
I don't think so. A lot of them are.
But make sure we get the Sunday night hotel room too, because I think there's meetings Sunday evening with MRC and.
I think that's what's gathered, right Peggy?
They found a, bring their whole staff.
Oh, really? I mean, on Sunday, leave on Sunday.
Wednesday.
I'll just get, continue, Commissioner Nelson. Um, just a few other, um, events. District four meeting. I know you've received emails, uh, for Friday, October twentieth, eight AM to noon. That's the district four meeting. Uh, that'll be in Fergus Falls. Uh, the annual township meeting will be Thursday, October nineteenth. We'll send you invites to all these just so you have it on your, on your schedule. But I just want to make sure the, the commissioners are aware of that. With the approval of, uh, of funding the Commissioner Okuson for the NACO events. He'll have something here in February at Washington DC. That'll be something that we'll want to schedule as we get closer to the end of the year. I just want to touch on the veterans item. I didn't have it as a agenda item, so, you know, any, either the commissioners could have spoke about it during the courthouse committee. But on page thirteen is the proposed map at the courthouse committee, the veteran service officer, uh, Matt had, had come in and requested some updates to the office because he'll have three staff, at least temporarily. They've taken the one door that, uh, isn't the typical entry level, the, uh, the door right next to it, they've created an office in there. And they wanted to review that with the courthouse committee. The courthouse committee seems very supportive of that. Over time, what they'd like to do is create that into a waiting room. There is a lot of instances where, you know, there's a big line at DMV and the, the veterans are kind of like stacked up and also in the hallway, waiting for their meeting. And, uh, and I believe the courthouse committee seemed very supportive of that as well. So, uh, that was really what the map was for, just to see if the board had any.
Yeah, as you can see, the dollar amount isn't very large. Um, so it didn't really need to come to board, but we just thought that you would like to see the flow, the difference, flow change. And the, the reason, the reason this is, is both, both employ, both of those people over there now will be, what's the term? Veteran service officers. So they will be meeting, they can both meet with clients and have those discussions. So that's why they wanted two separate offices. Um, there will be a flow concern or, just because it, it's not the best flowing in there, but, um, it, uh, we just discussed it with Matt and we'll just have to work through it and see how things go. But this will at least give them some better options and, um, the, put a window in there. But, yeah, there's, there's going to be some hiccups, I think, in how you, because when you come into the office, you want to be recognized right away. And so that, that was the only concern, so.
Our next meeting on the community-based comp plan will be next week. We have two commissioners that sit on that. We'll have some advertisements too that we'll be bringing to you, um, at future meetings. One contract that's expiring for a couple of our CHIPS attorneys, this is, uh, Children in Need of Protection Services that expires at the end of the year. So we're going to advertise that and certainly allow them and others to, um, um, submit a request. And then we'll be bringing that to the board once we have that, uh, once we have those received. We did get a request from members of the Wanting and Park Project, um, to meet with the board. And I indicated I would bring that to the board and the board may assign it to a committee, but they would like to review a grant opportunity that the county, they'd like the county board to support and talk a little bit about the project. So I guess my question to the board is, is, would you like us to set something up for the next board meeting, or would you prefer that go to a committee?
I think they should come present where they're at to the full board.
Okay.
Everybody hears it. Doesn't have to be a long presentation, but just where, where they're at and where they're on going.
I'll let them know. And then a couple of just final items. Um, we touched, talked a little about the capital improvement plan and the direction was to have individual departments put together a plan. They're, they're in process with doing that. Uh, and then have an informal meeting. Uh, we should have that ready to review at the next board meeting. We should have that ready to review at the next board meetings, whether it's an informal meeting, or during the board, or at a committee, but I just thought I'd keep the board updated on that, and then I think the only other item, it was just more budget related, I guess I'll, I'll save it for the budget review. That's everything I have for a report.
Okay.
And the actual class and comp was, was put in there post-close session meeting, so it isn't anything we're gonna talk about right now, but we just wanted to have it there if there was an action item for the board.
So you're, you, there's no discussion at this time?
Not at this time, yeah.
So what is a closed session for?
We're going to close session for negotiations, and again, this is kind of part of that. Whether the board wants to do that or not, I mean, we, we just thought we'd put it in place, like we had done at previous board meetings. We do have our consultant here on standby who can be available via team, so if the board just wants to have an open discussion, we can have it as well.
Well, I guess, I don't know the. So you want to move the number, if there is any discussion about class and comp, about, you want to move that to the end after the close?
Yeah, I mean, if, if there was any direction coming out of closed session, we just wanted to have that there as a placeholder, just so the public saw that we might be taking action. But you may not really what comes out of closed session.
Okay, number three?
County assessor resignation, that's on page 14. The, Lisa Will, our county assessor, has, has put in her resignation. We've set up a transition team with her and her chief deputy to go through process steps moving forward, her last day will be on the 20th. Commissioner Nelson, as the board chair, received a letter, as did I, from the property tax division, just laying out milestones that need to be met after the assessor is no longer with us, we can appoint a temporary assessor, and we will consider doing that when we reach that time, we've posted the position. And, but we are looking to have the board accept that resignation.
I, I did forward that to the full board, just, and, and Mary, it surprised me that Mary, the auditor is actually part of that, so Mary, Mary will assume those duties and with no change in her. No, you're not interested? Okay, that's all right.
You get a free donut.
Okay, and we set our preliminary budget for 2024, any changes or anything?
Well, Commissioner Nelson, could we get an acceptance of the resignation?
Oh, we need a.
Yes, yes, we do.
I'll, I'll move to approve the resignation.
To accept?
Or, accept, yeah.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. I wanna, wanna send my thanks out to Lisa for her years here, and wish her the best of luck in her new, new position. And I don't know that we should share her new position, but she will still be in contact with us and hopefully work well. Not in a county, not in the county, at a county employee, congratulations to her.
Yep, thanks, like, thank Lisa too.
I could move on, Commissioner, on budget, page 15, of course, we have the timeline there, since you've set the preliminary maximum levy, and that's been submitted to the state. We are now at the, the point of just ongoing over the next couple of months, county board, department head, and administrator review. We've had multiple reviews at both the committee and department level. I think the big items that, and the 5.9% levy increase is certainly wages. Insurance, I know we're gonna be touching on later on it as an agenda item, we budgeted a 3% insurance increase, so I'm happy to say that we won't have to levy any more than that, depending on what the board decides with insurance. Of course, there were positions that were added into the budget for, for an assistant attorney and a lieutenant position as well. The one thing that I'm looking to get, and of course, the capital improvement plan work that we're doing is also part of the budget, but one of the things that I wanted to make sure you knew that didn't get into the budget because of when we got the requests is we do have a request, it was kind of mentioned at the joint governance meeting, that the food pantry had made a request of the city. They have also made the request of the county for an annual operational allotment of 13,000. And so I've asked for them to provide their budget, which is what we usually do for external agencies, and so that's something you'll have to give us direction on, and then the second item, again, from an external agency, is Museum had sent a request concerning assisting with the cost of insurance for the new building. And we're estimating that to be about 5,900 of their cost for the insurance, but we also reached out to MCIT and asked for a quote, which we don't have, on what it would be if we took on that insurance, to see which would be the more competitive one. So those are two items that did not go into the budget that we'd have to have some discussion about. And then finally, I guess some direction from the board on what you'd like to see over the next four meetings prior to the TNT hearing. Would you like us to bring each budget to now to the board and to review that, and also have department heads review the investment of new positions, and certainly we'll start scheduling that over these next four board meetings. Would, or would you like to see a more committee approach? I'd like, I'd just like to get some direction to make sure we get good buy-in from the board at this time.
Well, we were, you know, I know Sheriff, Sheriff Glaner, we, we touched base with that at finance yesterday, we would, we kind of want to just get a better feel of the, of the final budget before we, but I think so, by year's end, we should have that feel and, and look at when the start date of some of these positions would, you know, would, would fit in, I think is probably the best option, so. I think go through committees, but I think the committees are gonna have to be slow till we get just a better under, better feel of our final, final levy. I, I, I don't anticipate our final levy going down, but I do anticipate some unexpected expenses or some. I just think there's things in there that we didn't fully budget for, that are, that they're gonna cost us money too, so. But it's all doable, and we have a, we have a reserve that we might have to. I think like last, last year was, we spent reserve monies to, to offset the salary increases that were given last year, that's why, that's why we're behind in this year's levy, because we're paying two years' increase in salary, so this year's is in the budget, but net, last year's is, there was about a 3% increase in our levy because of last year's salary increase. So we're trying to play catch-up, and that's never good, we never like to do that, but, anyway. So, long story short, I think we go through committee and, and slow play it a little bit, and see when, when those, when the best start date for balance of budget and needs are.
And this is a final thought, if I may, Commissioner Nelson, I think the other thing would be bargaining negotiations, which again, are for 2024, we that's gonna be part of the wage discussion, and, yeah. The one positive thing I could share with you though is, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, is out of the legislative money that has been received for this year, for 2023 and '24, the only, the only amount that's been incorporated into the budget so far is the county program aid, so all those other sources of funds, including the sheriff funding and things like that, are all still there in special general.
Most of those are one-time.
Correct, yeah, but I just, sources, is just what I was talking about, yeah.
And I think Sheriff Glaner has those, those funds spent three or four times over, at least he's got them spent once.
Well, not at the sheriff meeting, yeah.
I think there's some good, good countywide uses for that, for some of that money for, in my opinion, I think, to help off, to at least offset some of the costs for radios for the, all the fire and, and rescue in the county, but we'll see where, how much, how much we can put towards that, so, that's a big discussion, so.
That's all I have for budget, thank you.
Okay, finance. Mary, did you have a, did you hand out a?
Yep, she did.
Oh, yeah, I can't see this, I'm sure I got it somewhere. John, did we need to act on these Becker County tram donations?
Yeah, we.
Accept them.
Accept them, so they.
Remind, under environmental, we might have to add that.
Okay, the claims were already approved through the consent agenda. Is there anything else you need to address on finance? I believe everything is on the agenda.
Did we accept the cash comparison, is that under?
That's next, that's.
Okay, we should, we could probably put that under consent agenda too, in the future, right? To accept, to.
Yeah, accept the monthly reports.
To accept the.
Monthly reports, yep.
If you have a question, just pull it out of the consent.
So the first item I have is the license list, we have nine tobacco renewals. Do you want me to go through each one?
Does anyone?
Do we need to?
No.
I know.
I just need a motion.
Motion to approve all nine tobacco license renewals.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mary, have you heard anything about the, in the upcoming, when, when marijuana is legal, are they gonna license that on sales, just like this?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, well, that's.
Open for sale to outside the tribe until 2025.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I was just saying, if we heard anything, how, how they plan on, I heard a one time, they're just gonna mirror it with tobacco.
They probably will, just so they get the revenue.
Well, yeah.
Next is the July Cash Comparison Sales Tax and Investment Summary, requesting a motion to accept.
Entertain a motion to accept the Cash Comparison Sales Tax Investment Summary.
Move to accept, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by John, second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the final item I have is Resolution 1023-1D. We're requesting a purchase electronic poll books for the cities and townships with over 500 registered voters to be used in the 2024 election.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and explain the, the poll books, and that they're being used in other, you know, most other counties?
Right.
And what, what they are, and how they're connected, and how they're not connected.
Okay, so the poll books are like an iPad.
Page on that for.
And, yep, there should be, there should be a, the next page. It's, it's an iPad that is not connected to the internet, it's only used for voter registration, so when you get into your poll, you tell them your name, it would pull up your name, and then you would sign your name on that poll book. They should have been, can you roll past that request? There's, there should have been a picture.
Yeah, we had a.
We had a picture, yeah.
Yeah, no, okay, well, maybe it didn't make it in there, but, yeah, it's basically just like a tablet that, the only thing it's used for is the signature, this is not hooked, this is not used for the marking of the ballots or the counting of the ballots, it's just when you register to vote, then when that.
So this takes, as, when you go into the, you're voting, the town hall, this takes place of the signature, so when you go and tell them your name, they'll have it on the, the iPad, which will only be connected to the other iPads, if any, through Bluetooth in the courthouse, they're not on the internet.
Right.
So, so if you sign that, that iPad itself prints out your, your number.
Receipt, your voter receipt.
That you have to hand to the next, so there will not be any lost receipts, I mean, there will be, those numbers should be identical, it, it adds now, I, I think it adds a layer of security, again, to those voting, because now you have an electronic signature that will mirror all the rest of those in, in that, if there gets to be, it, it'll expedite the line if there's a, because you can have more than one. But then you have a printout of, from that machine, so you hand that printout of your name and signature and your number to the person that gives you the ballot.
Correct.
So it's an, it's, it's another, it's another layer of security to prevent any.
And it should eliminate the people signing the wrong line.
Exactly, it will correct a lot of errors, because, yeah, you can't sign the wrong line.
Yeah.
And also, in the processing, the paper rosters used to be brought to the courthouse, and the staff would have to hand scan each vote, and it took us weeks to enter all of the voter history. And what, now, when we come back, we'll be able to download that right.
The signatures.
The signatures.
To match, instead of copying them.
Yep, scanning them from the paper, yep. And currently, 70% of the counties in Minnesota converted to this in 20, by 2022.
Yeah, most of the larger counties are doing this already, and I, I think this will be a benefit for, for not only staff here, but just for for security of those, of those votes, and it'll be a lot easier to check, cross-reference things too, to make sure things are done well. So, those questions were asked at, at our meeting, and just, just to make sure, because, you know, you, we're gonna get questions on it, and for the safety of it, for the but, I mean, what's nice, it's, it's right there, you sign it, the printout comes right there, it's not, this is for that one purpose and one purpose only, so, I feel it's an additional safeguard for, for voting, and I think like, like I said, we are one of the few counties of our size that don't have it, so. It's been, it's been approved by other counties already, so. So, Mary, did you have to add one? Oh, go ahead.
It's also in the budget, and it's also in the, by your capital balance.
Yep.
Did you have to, did you want to add one?
Well, we will be, with the same money we had budgeted, we are short. One of the auto mark, they were called, now it's called Omni Ballot, we bought 30 Omni Balls in 2022, but one of the precincts has decided to split and go back to their town hall, so we do not have the machine that they vote with to mark the ballot, so we do need to order that as they will be having, going back from their combined polling place to their town hall. So there is one Omni Ballot purchase included in these budgeted item. And that's just so that every polling place has an assisted voting device in the event that you want to use it, it's the machine that marks the ballot, then you take the ballot over to the DS 200 to be counted.
That's for, for impaired users, correct?
Or anyone who wishes not to hand mark it, right, yep, yep, a voter assistance machine, yep.
Okay. Okay, wishes of the board.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1023-1D.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, all those in, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Mary. So we had a, a benefits committee had a follow-up, what day was that?
Friday.
Friday? To go through the, the last recommendation, because we had a, at that time, we were, we were still, Steve was still looking at Teamsters contract, or Teamsters proposal, and was still trying to get some of that information.
Commissioner, maybe define who Steve is, because.
Uh, Steve is our, our broker.
Steve Smith.
So what you have before you is a, a sheet that was prepared by Steve Smith. He did a lot of comparisons through this process, and as we went out for bids for medical insurance. The good news is, is Becker was very competitive, we had many answers to our, our FP, and lots of options to choose from. So if you go left to right, the contracts on the left show you how many people in Becker County are on each of those three plans, we currently have the three plans, the high, the value, and the HSA plans, one plus one, single and family. And going across, we also got a, a PEAP bid, where we're currently in, those were actually lower coming in, however, the issue with that, or his recommendation is not to go with PEAP again, because of their second year, there's no cap on the second year rate.
So they, they can raise their rates 49%, and we can't do anything about it, and I think they had some of those last year. So, that was one of the negatives that they, and the other negative is their reporting, the reporting of the claims is not very good, so when you go out and ask another to, to put it out there, you have a one-page summary, and other companies, under, underwriters don't like seeing that minimum information, they like to see detail on how they, how they can bid, so a little bit of a negative on that too, we did get good rates, so.
So continuing on, Medica, this is quoting the, all three levels of the plans that we currently have, the, the high plan, the value plan, and the HSA. The premiums are shown under the Medica in the middle there, for 847.89 for a single HSA, and the 678.31, that second column under Medica is if an individual is choosing their clinic to be Essentia, you get a discount of that 678. And then continuing on to the right with Medica, the rates again go down, or the, excuse me, the, the premiums again go down, and this is if we were to choose to drop the high plan, because there's very few people in the county that are utilizing that high, high plan. So then the, the premiums again would go down. So then the, the premiums again would go down to the 74085. And what that plan is, is really, it's an, it's a open access plan. You're not locked into any particular, uh, place or, uh, network, if you will. It's considered, uh, it's called passport. It's, you can go wherever you want with limited referrals. And that was really what came out of our committee, was a high priority for them, is not having to have those referrals and, and having that open access to, to medical. So that 740 is that open access. The 59268 premium, again, I'm just quoting the single HSA plans, is, again, if you are, um, choosing Essentia as your primary, uh, clinic of choice. You still have the option to go out of network, however, um, your costs are lower if you're within the Essentia. And the last column there is some comparisons he did, as, uh, the chair already referenced, of the insurance with the Teamsters. We weren't able to get as much information as we would have liked, but, um, he is not recommending that either. So, at the end of the day, his recommendation, uh, is the, to go with the, the Medica plan and the quote. And he also, the other highlight of that particular plan is the, the health and wellness benefits, which I, I passed out just a, kind of a cheat sheet for you to reference. Um, the highlight of, one of the highlights of that is, um, any members that are under the plan have the option to earn $200 per person for anybody 18 or older. It's a point system under wellness. And there's several, uh, online apps and, and different access points that you can also utilize under that plan, so.
So, for those of you just getting this information, it's, it's a bit overwhelming, but the, the plan, the plan that is recommended is the Medica. So the first two are peep, then you go past that, and you can cross those out. They're not being recommended. And then it says quota deducts, it's Medica. That's the one that's being recommended, and that is, uh, that's called the passport that you can go to. You don't have to say which one you're going to. That is more expensive than we were, but, um, if you choose to go, the next one, Medica Essentia ACO is included in that, so you could choose that one and go to Essent, if Essentia is your, um, where you, where you have your provider, and so your, your costs go down significantly. If you want to stay with the Medica, with the, with the passport and go to, if you're going to Sanford, you can then choose to go, if you go to the right or the higher deductible, and you could, you, your premium would be, um, less. That would be the Medica A L T S, right?
Correct.
So you could go with the high deductible. And we haven't, we haven't determined which plans we're going to go with yet, but we can get a high deductible there, and then your premium would go, then you could have a reduced premium also. But it does go up a little bit for, the family one is where we were concerned about. If you take a higher deductible, you can save money there. So we're, it's not the best scenario, but, um, we felt with the cost savings for, with those in Essentia would, would be a big benefit, and we anticipate, currently, I think it's 60% go to Sanford and 40% go to Essentia, but we think that might flip-flop if, if you see the savings to go to Essentia, that some people might take that instead. The last, the last one, the J C three is the Teamster, so you can mark that off. It's not being recommended, but, um, the, and, and remember, we had another, was it six more?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, I think, I want to say we had about eight.
The second place one was the Blue Cross Blue Shield one that people were interested in. That actually.
That one was slightly less than Medica.
Yeah.
But there wasn't the benefits, and there wasn't the Essentia discount.
Right, the, if you did, they had a discount, but it was very minimal.
Not for Essentia.
Yeah, 5%.
Oh.
Yeah, he, he said that on the, online, because I asked that.
Okay.
Um, and I'm pretty sure he said it was only a 5%, so it wasn't significant. This one is a, was it?
Twenty-eight percent.
This was significantly more.
Yeah.
That's, that's why Blue Cross Blue Shield. But the other thing worth mentioning is the, the Teamsters did include vision and dental. Um, but we priced that out, and the, and it was not, um, it was not a strong enough benefit to go with them. With all the questionable, you know, there, just so many questions on that one, so.
So, and, and just to clarify, uh, when you compare on your sheet the two Medica columns, um, really the main difference, the deductibles and the out-of-pocket costs are the same. The difference is on the far, furthest to the one to the right, you're dropping the high plans. That's really the difference. So I did clarify that with him this morning.
Pardon me?
I did clarify that with him this morning.
The one on the right, you're what?
Um, you're basically dropping those high plans.
You're dropping the 4,000 then, right?
You're dropping the.
The two?
The three high plans for family, um, employee plus one, and single. But your deductibles and out-of-pocket costs is what he's saying, is, would stay the same. The premiums would go down, dropping those high plans that are less utilized.
The, the top, the high single, the high E E, then the high family?
Correct.
So, I'm confused. So if you have an, say you have an HSA plan, and you go to, through Medica, and you go to Essentia, and you're going to pay $592.68 in your premium, is that correct?
That's correct.
And your deductible's going to be 5,500, or is it going to be 3,000?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five per single.
What is the?
This is.
This is for peep, I think, right?
Is that for peep?
Yep. So the deductibles on, um.
He was asking about the high value, directly under the peep renewal.
Oh.
That was, that was for peep though, wasn't it?
Yep.
Those numbers were.
So the, the deductibles for the, on the Medica, it's the $5,500 for single.
For the HSA.
Correct. And 11,000, 11,000. I don't think that's on your sheet.
The family would be the same, correct? 5,500?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's cool.
One, one thing to note about the Teamsters program, they were not HSA eligible, was, which really was kind of the non-starter for that, um, for, for that, to look at any farther. If they weren't, if we couldn't get an HSA, then it was like, I mean, we, that's, that's a non, for me, that's a non.
And there was a lot of information we weren't able to get from them, to kind of give that security of going with them. Would you agree?
I would agree.
So, I mean, it was, was a good, some really good discussions, and, and had a lot of information to look at. So thankfully, had a expert to review this and compare them, and, and he really, I think, um, contacted the, the providers and, and tried to get us, I mean, numerous times, to get better deals even, because they knew that was being.
Yeah, I think Medica even gave us an initial quote, and then came back with a better quote, with the Essentia.
And the, the, yeah, the other thing to note is there is no gym membership fee reduction in, in any plan. They, I, and he stated at last meeting that none of, the Blue Cross didn't offer that come January.
We were hoping for that, but that didn't happen.
Yeah, so they're, they're transferring over to this, um, this point system, or, so they're, but that's not available for either one of them.
Yep.
And peep didn't offer it before, so.
And Medica had some, like, digital video, an app that had online fitness classes.
And, yeah, there was some online mental health stuff, too, going on.
There was, and that's the sheet that I passed out, I think, to some highlights of the wellness program. Um, the other thing I, I wanted to mention with the Medica, this would be a, a two-year plan with a maximum cap of the increase in premiums at 12%. So that's as high as we would be able to go, obviously, if, or not obviously, but, um, if we were under that for the increase. It's based on claims. So if we came in better than that, um, the max is at 12%.
And there's no commitment. So if they come in at 12%, we feel like we could do better than that. I mean, we don't, we don't have to stay with Medica next year. Correct?
Correct, correct.
So with the committee, I think, um, the full committee agreed that Medica was the option they wanted to move forward with, so it was.
So, so which, which plan?
We haven't decided.
Okay, so we're not going to, so either this one or this one?
Well, this is.
Or which company?
This one, and how, and, yeah, we're going to go with Medica, Medica, I mean, we have all these available to us.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and we gotta, we'll probably have to narrow it down, because we don't, we can't have that many options in that group, but.
I got you.
Um, we certainly want to go with one of these high deductibles.
Yeah.
Four or 55, whichever one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this morning, his recommendation really was, because we have such the low, we have a few people on the high plan, but because of the cost savings, if you were to drop those plans and the premiums, that would be his recommendation.
Yep.
I think we'll, we'll meet on that again and.
Yes.
Fine tune that.
That's where I was confused. Okay, now I got it. Then these are, why still?
That's peep.
We have, no, the peeps right here. What are these? This is peep. What's this?
Um, the.
The 400, 850, 2,000, there, Carrie, is, does that go with the Medica?
I'm sorry, which one, anyone?
Um, where it says quota deducts? Is that, are those for Medica?
They're for all of them.
Yep.
Because we're matching.
Comparing, yeah, he was matching plans.
Yep.
Oh, so those.
That's just the match.
So, I get.
Both of them, because in all of them, he tried to match apples to apples.
Yep.
So that's why the, that's why we're, that's why these numbers over here are different. They didn't offer them in peep, so we're. So.
Like Commissioner, we did budget for a 3% insurance increase. This, if you do select Medica, that would be 2.9, so that's within what's been.
This is the out-of-pocket.
And that's if everybody goes with Medica, not including if people go with Medica Essentia, which could be.
Could be less, yeah.
Significantly less, yep.
Good point.
Okay, so this is the out-of-pocket. Okay, I'm, I figured.
I, I think our budget.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow today.
That won't affect our budget, though, will it? If, if everyone went with, I mean, I don't think our increases, if we go with Medica, it's 2.9% increase.
But it could be lower, as Commissioner jumps in, said if people were to look at alternative plans within Medica.
I don't, I, I think, um, our commitment's going to be the same regardless of which plan.
The formula, as we talked about, we probably don't want to go too far into the weeds here, but the formula would stay the same, so, for each employee and the benefits that they get.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to save any more money on.
Oh, gotcha.
In my opinion, I don't, I think the 2.9 is going to be the 2.9.
Well, it, it is 2.9, yep, you're right.
I was thinking more the employee.
The employees.
Yeah, that's where I was.
Employees are going to save.
The budget, the budget is not going to change from 2.9.
No, no.
Okay. Yes, then each individual employee should, you know, may get more money in their, depending upon what happens. Okay, so we're going to entertain a motion to, what, what is the motion read? To accept or to?
To accept the recommendation of our broker to go with Medica.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Dave seconds? I would say we entertain a motion. I would like it to be added that our committee and broker recommend.
Yes. Oh, yes. That would be appropriate.
So, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I do want to thank the committee members, um, that have worked on this so far. I think it's been a good, uh, a good discussion, a good partnership with everyone on the committee. So thank you for participating and giving your input on the committee.
So just for, um, clarification, if I may, so you're asking for the committee to come back together and make a final recommendation on which plan? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think we need to look which, yeah, I think so.
For clarity?
I believe they're, they were going to go back to their.
And, and break the recommendation.
And, and to see what the consensus is as far as which deductible plans to offer.
Yeah, four, four or 55, and, because we're, we want to try to whittle all those options down a little bit, but.
And again, my understanding and, um, is the deductibles aren't going to change, the premiums are going to change if we drop the high plan. That's really the difference. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And when you say high plan, you're talking about the.
Big things, tell, choose to add all these numbers up.
Well, we'll, we'll work through that in committee and come back.
Just a comment, you know, we're not the only ones dealing with insurance. Our Prairie Lakes, Minnesota, solid waste, they got the same issue. They're looking at probably tying on with Otter Tail County to get better rates, to get more, uh, people. Clay County's going through the same thing. They had a pretty good increase in, this year. They're looking at probably even self-insuring.
Yeah, Lakeland Mental Health self-insures, and then reinsures that, uh, after the first 100,000, I think.
Well, and it was mentioned this morning, the City of Detroit Lakes is looking at a
24?
24% increase, so we're very fortunate.
It's a big thing. Lake County has 600 and so employees, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, my second item is, um, the wellness fair that we have sent out the save the date for October 18th. The, the goal of that is really to assist employees in learning about their benefits. I would imagine that we'll spend the majority of our time going through our, uh, medical insurance once we have that in place, because there'll be a lot of questions as we, as we switch over.
And Carrie had asked if, um, about, there's some programs in there that will cost a nominal amount of money, under, up, maybe up to 1,000, and, and they have authority, and she has within her budget. I said we'd just mention it, that, um, they're going to be looking at some, some of these expenditures, and it did not need to come before board because of dollar amount, but I thought it's good for you to know that, um, we're, we're spending a little money on the employee recognition and employee, um, the health fair, so.
Right, and so they, and, uh, this really piggybacks with this. We have done some touring, we had onsite, uh, the state partnership breastfeeding specialist, and we were, uh, looking through our building here to designate an area for that purpose, and also to double as a quiet room for anybody that may have some medical issues. Um, I did have, uh, myself and the, uh, Pat did have some conversations yesterday with Sheriff Glander, and there is a room up on the third floor, uh, dispatch room on the outside of the, uh, third floor conference room, that we believe that can be turned in to, for that purpose. So, um, that is the plan going forward, and under this, uh, state partnership program that I was under, or that I was a part of, excuse me, um, Becker County did receive a small grant in order to, uh, buy the supplies, such as a chair and some of those items for that particular room. So hoping to have that, um, cleared out, painted, and then redone for that purpose.
Good.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we are on a break till 9:40. You have one minute. Well, let's say we have five minutes, so. Truck you want to purchase? The prices have went up considerably, so.
What is, Jim, what is the total of that?
Pardon me?
What's the total on that, on everything on that truck?
34628.
330.
330.
278.
278.
You on fuel, fuel and oil added?
What was the last one?
280?
I think it was 290s.
290 something, 295.
Yeah, I was just going through it, and I'm like, is this?
Okay.
Darn, the case caught me.
First item on Jim's agenda is purchase the plow truck, and it's went up the, and I think in discussions, it's mostly the plow truck went up, but the accessories have went up considerably, and probably putting them on the truck, because the labor has probably went up on it, but.
Yeah, fortunately, we are, we're requesting approval this year, this is for the 2024 budget cycle, so we have it included in our budget, so, and it's just that long lead time to get these trucks, so that's why we're requesting this now. We're seeing it in all equipment, so it's not like we can chop around and, and find different brands, and some of the different brands can't deliver as quickly as, like the Mack trucks can, so.
I would, I'd anticipate that you'd wanna, do you wanna put it on the same, or do you want to sell the old truck later? I mean, that's for next year's sale?
We'll decide, we haven't decided which truck yet we're gonna sell, so.
So you don't wanna?
Till we get through the winter, we might actually keep an older truck that we put a new motor in recently, so we'll decide that, I think, this summer when the truck, or next summer when the truck comes in.
Okay. Okay, entertain a motion, approve, 1023 one.
I'll move one E.
Motion by John, second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And this was off state bid, so there was no need for other quotes.
Next item for your consideration is the final payment to Celine Brothers for the reconstruction of Randolph, or Highland Drive, excuse me. Price came in slightly over due to some extra erosion control work and some bituminous incentives that they received, but the project turned out very nice. This is one of those projects where we had a $1.2 million grant from State Bonding Mounds in that LRIP program. The remainder of it is being shared with the city and the county. The township is not sharing. We did an agreement where we will be taking this road over in exchange for County Road 141. So, essentially, we, we get a new road and they have our, our road, so we felt that was a good deal. They were all in agreement, too. This is a highly traveled road between the two trunk highways and stuff, and as it grows and develops over there, too, there could be more commercial area or whatever using that road, so it'll be good for us, too, when we make it a state aid road. It'll generate what we call our, our road needs and actually provide us a little bit better, a little bit more funding, if, if we do that, so.
Yes, it was a very, very good partnership with the city and the township and the county. Took a lot of moving parts, and it went pretty, pretty smooth, so.
Make a motion to approve 1023 one B.
Second. Motion by John, second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item is approval of a resolution of support for Sugar Bush Township. They are planning to apply to this LRIP grant program here this fall. This program has significantly more funds in it this year than previous years, and there are special funds just going towards townships to compete for that money. So, I anticipate there'll be other townships coming forward with resolutions as well. The deadline for their application is December 1st, so there might be a few more here coming in the next coming months.
Okay, and we are happy to support those applications.
Move one E.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard to approve one E. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And finally, item, our road tour. I know we have a couple new commissioners, but every fall, we take a road tour, we pick a morning, go out and kind of look at the projects we've completed during the year, and look at any special, you know, future projects, you know, that we can point out, you know, maybe some significant details about the project that you might hear comments on as we develop those projects. But we're looking at, according to whatever your calendar allows, maybe that last full week of August, I don't know if that Tuesday, non-board day works for you, but actually any of those days work. We typically leave at 8:30 in the morning and get back before noon. We can make it shorter, you know, to accommodate schedules and such, but.
What is the appetite of the board? Are you interested in a road tour?
I would be, yeah.
Okay, the last week of October is the 23rd is Monday, it's the 4th, that's the 4th full week, so there's no board meeting on Tuesday, the 24th, so it's the 23rd to the 27th. I'm not available the 23rd Monday, Lakeland Mental Health meeting.
I would not be available the 24th.
24th, I gotta meet.
That's a Tuesday, so.
I have, I have a meeting in the morning.
Tuesday's not available. Richard, are you interested in going on?
In climbing in a bus with you four? I'm concerned about it, but I probably shouldn't do it.
It would be a fun time, Richard.
25th.
I brought beef sticks last time.
I'll bring cheese.
Okay.
25th is the meeting, 26th.
I am meeting both the 25th and 26th.
You gonna shoot for the 27th?
I have, I'll be.
Now, as you can see, there's numerous meetings for Commissioners.
Do you wanna look at 31st?
The 30th? Not the 31st, probably, Halloween.
Okay.
Oh, we could do it to Halloween, there's not much going on in the morning, but Monday.
The 30th would go.
30th.
Monday, the 30th?
Mm-hmm.
And would you have the requirement that we all dress in Halloween attire? Come as dumb Commissioners.
I'll, I'll dress.
30th? 30th work, Monday, the 30th?
Send out an invite.
Yeah, send out an invite and we'll, yeah.
And the, the tour is usually picked by the, by Jim and his staff to see what, if there's any things that you wanna maybe look at. We obviously cannot get through the whole county, because it's a big county, we usually target a certain area, somewhere where you're going to do, but I'm gonna leave that up to you, to you guys to determine.
And if you have anything in particular that you'd like to, you know, visit to, we can coordinate that if there's something special that you've heard from your constituents or anything like that.
In the past, we've, we've got a little transit bus, so if the press is wanting to go with, you're more than welcome to, just notify so we can make sure we have the right accommodations. In the past, also, I think, sometimes a commissioner will meet, meet somewhere if you're going to, you know, somewhere that they'll meet on.
Oh, my way?
If you're.
I don't have to drive all the way in?
Right, that's, I think Larry's done that, where we pick them up on the way out to the, on the way out to tour.
But then you have to hitchhike back.
Yeah.
I suppose I live in town, I have to drive.
So, we'll entertain a motion to have the, the highway tour at 8:30 on Mon, Monday, the 30th of October, and duly posted. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move, go ahead.
Motion by Dave? Second, second by Richard?
Perfect.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
And harvest is going on full steam. I know I've seen beet haulers out, so everyone drive careful on, especially get in those areas of high, high use corn, corn will be, beans are starting to wrap up and corn harvest is gonna be.
And potatoes.
Starting, potatoes. And it's, it's amazing, the traffic, and that dust last night was terrible.
Yeah.
You couldn't see anything, the dust from the harvest was just hanging on everything. No air movement last night, so. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Commissioner now, it's 9:55, we jumped to.
Yes, let's, we're going, I thought that was a 10, I didn't even look, so thanks for the reminder. We are now at eight, 9:55, going to planning and zoning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Have Planning, Planning Commission recommendations from September 27th for your consideration this morning. The first applicant of old business, Nicholas and Betsy Lewis, was tabled. Both the first and second applicant of new business will be going to townships for final plot consideration, so that moves us to the third applicant, which is Linda Harris, requesting a change of zone from residential to agricultural.
Okay, and I think there's some people here to speak on this. So, let me clarify, though. So is that the only thing that we're talking today, is this change of zone?
For Harris?
Yes.
Yes.
So, there's no conditional use permit for livestock in here?
No.
So it's the, the only thing that we're addressing is a change of zone. Can we put stipulations on the change of zone?
I don't believe so, no. I, I don't know, I just don't see how that would carry.
I don't think so either.
That is disgusting.
Right. That, that's essentially the reason for a conditional use permit, right, because you can stipulate and articulate different things. I, I don't know how you could do that with a change of zone.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure. Brian, can you, do you have any thoughts on that? So a change of the, and, and the change, my question is, on a change of zone from residential back to agriculture, can you put stipulations on, in the Shoreland District or the, can you put stipulations on the request when you make this change to agriculture? Okay, yeah, I, I started when I reviewed this, because I had a couple calls, and I started looking at it, and when I read the minutes, I got the minutes on Friday evening, afternoon or evening, I looked at it, it wasn't a conditional use permit, it was just a change of zone.
Right.
It seems to me that conditional use permits are the, you know, the realm to put conditions on. I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a change of zone with stipulating.
Yeah.
I would, from what I recall from the training I attended last spring, the only thing you can put conditions on is a conditional use permit, not change of zoning.
Okay, well, let's, let's listen to the applicant, and is, is Linda Harris?
I don't see Linda. I know that gentleman, would you like to speak?
Well, is there anyone here speaking in favor of the?
No, I don't see her, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, let's, I know you've come here today to, to voice your opinions on this, so let's, anyone speaking, any, if you wish to speak on this for or against, I ask you to come up and, and sit at the table, state your name, and then give your, give your thoughts on it.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jeff Resencheck, I'm a current land owner, lake shore owner of Pearl Lake. I'm also the Pearl Lake Association President, representing the residents around the lake that have come to me with their concerns and thoughts in regards to this issue. I come here today not to strongly oppose this, but to really seek common ground on how we can work together as an association and the Harris family to come to some kind of understanding of her request. Our concerns, we have some questions in regards to her implementation of goats onto her property. Pearl Lake is a small lake, 281 acres, relatively shallow, so as a lake association, our primary concern is the upkeep of the water quality. Some questions, I think important questions, were not answered at last Tuesday's meeting. One being, how many goats are they considering to put on their property? The three acres that she's asking to change, or if allowed, the 16 acres that she'll have? So how many goats is reasonable? We don't know that, and we may not know that. Who's going to monitor these goats? Currently, right now, there is no residents on that property, so if goats were placed on that property, how are they going to be cared for? Who's going to be watching them? Who's going to ensure that they're staying on that property and not wandering onto other properties? And then how will they be kept onto that property? What kind of fencing will be involved? Manure. Right now, how is manure going to be handled from the goats, depending on how many goats there are? These are questions that I'm getting. We know legally, the setback is 50 feet. Mrs. Harris at the meeting shared that they were willing to go back to 100 feet. That would be great, I don't think that needs to be required, but that is something that we as an association would certainly appreciate if that would be a consideration.
I think, I think there's the problem. This is just a simple change of.
Yeah.
Class, so we can't, we can't, if we can't add those stipulations, 50, 50 feet is by state statute.
Right.
You can't have livestock with 50 feet of the, is that correct, Kyle?
There's nothing in our ordinance, and I'm not familiar with anything in state statute because I see livestock.
They're grand, I think they've been the grandfathered in, well, maybe I'm thinking of, of the water, you're not, are you in Pelican Watershed?
We are in Pelican.
I think Pelican, Pelican Watershed, I'm sure has a, well, I'm not sure.
I mean, it was set in the meeting, but then again, they questioned me, and I'm like, well, I see livestock in public water, so I don't.
I'm, I know there's, I know there's a.
I know there was one, there's one, was one by Big Pine Lake, but I believe that was a grandfathered.
I, I know there's grandfathered, but I'm pretty sure it's, it's state, that 50, that shore impact of the state, you can't have new livestock coming in and being in that shore impact zone. I know that the old, if you've had pasture and had animals there, I know they're, they're allowed, so I, because I'd see the same thing, ours, especially in some of these, you know, they call them lakes now, but I mean, when I was a kid, they're, they're so small that they weren't lakes, no fish or anything, but there's cattle wading into it. Even, even in Leaf Lake, I see cattle, cattle going in there. So I, I would, I would like to have some, just some common sense things that you could apply to this, because I, anyway, let's continue with your testimony.
So, as I, as I look, you know, we talked about future plans, will livestock, I think that's been answered, that won't occur other than the goats. But as a, an association, we're just looking for that common ground. What's the number of goats? Are we talking a dozen, or less, or more? I don't know. But as a, an association, we're just looking for that common ground. What's the number of goats? Uh, are we talking a dozen, or less, or more? I don't know. Insurance that, that these goats stay on that property, um, and, you know, taking care of the runoff, or protecting that runoff into the lake, because Pearl Lake does have an invasive species already. It's being shallow. That curly leaf is located throughout the lake. It is prevalent where this property is, so anything added to that lake at that point is just gonna exacerbate that, that curly leaf and continue. Pearl Lake's been a high phosphorus lake anyway due to the farming that has occurred in years past, so you introduce, uh, other chemicals, and Pearl Lake is going to explode, I think. So that's what we're trying to protect.
And, and my understanding from the meeting on Tuesday was they will be moving here and building, and my understanding is there will be no goats here until they're here. That was my understanding of Tuesday.
Yeah.
Again, the... Yeah.
Or Wednesday, last week.
Wednesday, yeah, whatever, whatever day it was, I can remember. Yeah.
Okay, any, anything else?
Nope, I'm just saying, you know, Pearl Lake, we're a developmental lake, we're a recreation lake. Many people use, uh, the lake through the public access. Uh, there are 66 homes, cabins on the lake currently, so it has changed greatly over the last 20 years, and we just try to preserve the little lake that we live upon. So, thank you.
Are, is she, are they asking for both par, is both parcels residential, though?
The 13 acre parcel is ag.
So...
You're changing it, three, three, three acres in change.
I'm just, I'm just going through my head. So if we don't, if we don't approve it, they're gonna be able to have goats on the 13 acres anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
I got, I just got one.
Let's, wait, let's have some more testimony before we, because I'm still wrapping my head around this a little bit. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this behalf? Anyone else? Okay, we will. Thank you for your time. I, um, I think, I think the requ, I mean, it's just asking to be a good neighbor is what the concerns are, and when you come in with a request like this, and you just, and you don't have the answers, um, I think everyone, I believe everyone would like to believe that this is going to be a good neighbor, and I hope, I think planning and zoning kind of thought that, that, you know, they're just trying to use goats to clean up some of the underbrush, which, um, wouldn't seem like a, a real negative.
And their idea with the goats is to rotate throughout the property, not have one spot all the time, and, so they, they wouldn't be moving around some, so it's gonna take, require additional fencing for them to do that.
Well, yeah, and a lot of those, I mean, there's, there's places that rent goats out, and they, they stake them, and then they brush them, so it's, it's a, it's a, it's, there's a, there's honest business like that, so...
I think I just read, there's a county, is it Stearns County, County, or Sherburne County? There's a county in Minnesota that is considering using goats to, for grazing.
So if there's no, if there's no stipulations that we can put on this, I mean, I would like to approve this with some stipulation, no more than 15 goats, and, and if there's, and if you leave the goats in one area, you're gonna have to have management of your, your waste. I mean, there's gonna be significant waste if you, I mean, we're all envisioning one thing, and what it's going to be might, you know, be simple, and not a, not a threat, but when you don't know, you always are thinking the worst.
Yep.
And that's where, that's where we're at.
I, I do want to just say one thing, though, Kyle, because I thought we had conversation, that they do, they do have to have some of that 3.7 in agriculture in order to have animals. Was that, didn't, did we not talk about that on Wednesday?
There's a four acre minimum, so...
There's a four acre minimum?
Four acre minimum. You get one animal unit for the first, first four acres, um, and then every additional two acres, you get one animal unit. So if the 3.71 is not changed, yeah, it can't, I mean...
They can't have it in that four acres?
It has to be combined. The 3.71, even if you change it to ag, has to be combined with the 13 acres.
In order to, goats on that 3.71?
Right, or at least pick up a quarter acre, a boundary line adjustment, which you wouldn't do that, you'd just combine it.
What, so what you're doing is combining to be one parcel?
Yes.
And you're, and you're saying you have to do that if you cha, if you change zone for that?
Well, otherwise, they'd have to do a boundary line adjustment of .29 acres to get to that four acre minimum, and you wouldn't go survey that, you'd just combine these and have 16 total.
So I think what you're saying is, what you're saying is, there's another way around this for them to put goats on this without coming to us.
No, there is not.
If you do a boundary line adjustment and have over four acres...
It's still residential and agricultural.
Just, just that one parcel.
Right. Agricultural uses are not permitted there, but by changing it to 3.71, they still have to combine to get to the four acre minimum, or the goats can't.
But the goats can still be on the other piece.
They can.
Big piece.
How many goats is one animal?
Well, in comparison to, we had, uh, sheep in here, I think it was, the math we did was about 70 goats would be allowed on the property.
On the total?
Right, and it's averaged by weight, so that could be more or less, depending on what the goat weighs. I don't know what they weigh.
But, and those numbers are, I mean, I, I'm, if there were 70 goats in there, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have to do a, we're gonna have some major issues here. I mean, I think we all agree.
She did say she did not intend to have that many, and that, and that would be if she intends on pastoring it all at once. Like, that, she would have 70 acres on the whole thing.
Right.
Or I mean, 70 goats on the whole thing, where this, she's planning on rotating it.
Right, but you know what I, what I'm saying is, the 70, 70 goats is not, I mean, when you look at what's available, even in a animal unit, now, we're in a shoreline district now within a thousand feet lake, so I don't know if those numbers really pertain to what's, what the capacity is. I mean, obviously for food capacity, maybe, or for, or area capacity, but when you're in the shore, shoreline zone, and, and you can deduct your shore impact zone out of those acres, it would reduce it some. Um, you're talking a little bit different scenario than just a, in my opinion. I struggle with this one, because adding it into the, putting it in the ag really, it really doesn't, it's not gonna have a negative effect, I think, because, is that a recreational or environmental lake?
Recreation.
So...
And where is the 3.7 acres that is currently residential? Is that the 3.7 towards the lake?
Well, that's all on the lake. It all has...
The whole, the whole 3.7 on the lake?
Yeah, so essentially what happened is, is the, the 13 acres to the north is just undeveloped land. This 3.7 acres is a part of a plat that got, went through the subdivision process, and they changed the zone.
Now, that's unusual that the zone got changed, even. That was many years ago.
Oh, this up here is...
I forgot, I forgot to ask, is there anyone online wishing to speak to this issue? Anyone online that wants to speak? No, just checking. Well, I would, I would love to approve this with some conditions, but if we can't put conditions on it, I have, they can still do it on the other part. I just have some hesitancy on, I wish the person would be here, because then, then we'd have some answers, so, um, I would...
Well, she, she gave us answers at the meeting, but...
How many goats was she gonna have?
She didn't have any.
Well, there you go. Then she didn't give you answers.
We had the same discussion, and we're, and zoning boards is, it's not what we're here for. It's a change of zone.
Yeah, but it's going to agriculture, and if your, if your agriculture use doesn't have a plan...
You had me on it, you know, and we all wanted to add stipulations, but we couldn't.
Uh, when did that patient come in?
I don't have, not, we're not anywhere near that timeline, no, Brian. I don't have the exact age or anything.
Rick?
To table it?
Is there an option to table it?
Yeah, absolutely.
To look at, to look at if we can have those stipulations on a change of zone?
Mm-hmm. Certainly.
Or, or could we change it to a conditional use for residential area? That probably wouldn't.
To have, for her to have a conditional use permit to have goats on her, in a residential area?
Yeah.
Yeah?
You know, the lake is not a big lake, but it's a recreation lake, a good, a fishing lake, and there are people, there's a lot of value on that lake, and I don't think this is going to harm it, but without knowing some answers and no, without, without, um, some, I, I don't know, because it's, it's a shallow lake, so it can't handle, the, the impact of runoff from ag waste would significantly harm it, if it's significant. If it's just a, if it's 10 goats on that whole property over the course of two summers, it's not going to.
My, my, my only question on that is, is the 13 acres that she already has, that is already zoned agriculture, she could have goats on.
Correct.
So, so I don't know that she's going to have any more goats if we, if she has this additional 3.7 acres. It's just, this is what she wants to use, she wants to have goats there for the management of it. So I, of course, she didn't, I mean, we, I can't say that for sure, but that was my impression of what her intention was, because she's rotating them, so we already have, I mean, she would already be having goats on the 13 acres.
Correct.
So I just...
Well, you're, we have the options of tabling, voting on it yea or nay. Um, I, I would, I would like to do a little, ask that we do some research on, on what, if we can put any conditions on it, and table it.
And maybe the 50 foot.
And seeing if that 50 foot is statute, because that would probably make a difference, too. If you can't bring them within 50 feet of the water, that would ease a lot of people's concerns. Um, if it doesn't, I mean, you, then it would be a little bit more. So I would, I would wish to table, but, um...
Do you need a motion?
If we wish to table for till our next meeting.
I'd make a motion to table it.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to table to our next meeting, which is...
17.
17.
To answer, to answer some of the questions, as we stated, the 17th of October, at appro, approximately...
10 o'clock.
Nine to 10 o'clock, in approximate time in the morning, so. All those in, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Uh, next applicant, Kale Arneson, requesting a preliminary plat for 10 lots. Um, recommendation to approve.
I know some documents. Um, I was up at Holmesville Township Hall, they submitted some stuff last night, and also I seen in the minutes, Brian's letter did not get in there, so if I may hand these. Essentially what those two documents are, is, um, Brian Shepherd's assessment of the road itself, and then some previous goals and policies of, um, Holmesville Township. It does say draft only. Township is also here, um, to speak, so.
Okay, um, state your name and name for the record.
My name is Maverick Larson. I work with Compass Consultants, who did the surveying work for the Arneson family. Um, I'm...
What was the first name?
Maverick.
Maverick.
M A V E R I C K. Um, they're requesting to have 10 lots over their 24 acres, as proposed on the maps you have, ranging from 150 foot to 232 feet in width. The buildable areas are primarily hardwoods consisting of oak and ash trees.
Okay, anything to add to that?
That'll be all.
Okay, um, if we have any questions, we will touch base with you again. Otherwise, we'll ask for anyone else wishing to speak for, for this proposal. Anyone wishing to speak for it? Anyone wishing in opposition wishes to speak? Yep, just state your name and, and address for us.
My name's Casey Lighthizer. Uh, I'm the treasurer for the Holmesville Township. We had the meeting last night, and, um, it was very clear, we had some residents come. They are not in favor of more traffic on the road. They don't feel that it is safe, or that it can handle 10 new properties. Their concerns are where the wells would go, where the septic would go, um, the fact that it's a dead end road, um, just basic traffic, and the fact that it's swamp or waterlogged on each side, so they don't know how the road would expand to make it a safe road. The township's concern as well is who would pay for it if this goes, does get through to make a safe road? Um, the whole township, I mean, pay for one road for very specific access. It's not a traffic road, it's not like Broadway or something where many people in the township use it. It would just be for the 10 new lots on the back end.
So would your township assess those 10 lots for any road improvements if they took it over?
That was not talked about. Um, they were wondering if the developer would be willing to pay for the improvements, the gravel, um, whatever.
Do you have a standard that you, before you even consider taking over a road?
We do not, at the moment, that I know of.
Okay, I know, and like, I think Lake Eunice, and John, you probably can, um, voice in, but most townships now have a standard before they'll even consider taking over a road. Um, some of them have number of residents on that road. Is this on the end of a dead end? I didn't, um, number of residents and, um...
Well, the road that's there is already a township road.
Okay.
Like, we already take care of it, blade it, all of that. It's just, it's not...
But it's a dead end?
Yes.
Okay.
For most part qualifies for a Class C road under our zoning ordinance, and it's typical, a lot of township roads I deal with. It's, yeah, lacking some ditching. Uh, it's been that way for years. Um, there's still a lot of snow in there. The resident lives way on the end, and it needs a little brushing and a couple of curves, and I was out there last weekend, and a few additions. I think, uh, 20 foot top is achievable through the whole thing, and I think Brian Shepherd alluded to that, too. Uh, some of it's 20 feet already, and with the proper blading and stuff, you could make it all 20. But, yeah, there's a couple of curves in there that need to be daylighted and brushed back, so you can, a little better visibility, but, um, I deal with a lot of roads this size around lakes and stuff, throughout many counties I consult for, so...
Another concern that was brought at the meeting, um, and I'm not sure, obviously, who would buy these places or whatnot, but they talked about, there's no place if an actual resident moved in there for a school bus to turn around and get in and out of there either.
Okay.
That was a concern. Usually, a road like this, you'd have either a hammerhead turnaround on the end, or cul-de-sac, which basically I prefer a hammerhead, which is a large T intersection.
Um, John, is there room down, is there room anywhere to, to have one of those up, pass that, or even if you go past it, is there room where a bus could turn around, or, I mean...
No, there's not. There's only 66 feet right away there, but past it would be a current condition where going down in this road, which Joe could speak to this, he's building the road, um, and what spec they'll be building it to, but there is a hammerhead in the development that would allow for the turnaround.
You know, the bus could down there, no?
I don't believe so.
So in the road that he's building now to get to the development?
Correct. That, that's where...
There'd be a turnaround.
The traffic for the bus, or, I mean, the bus would be going down the road they're building, which will have a turnaround, is all I'm saying.
There, there will be area for turnaround?
Yes.
So that, that's on the new road that's being built to these?
Correct. Within the development.
Do you have it up, up on the map? Can you put it up on the screen or not?
And who, and that, who will maintain that road?
That is up to the township, whether they still choose to take it over or not.
And if they don't?
Then the homeowners themselves.
You know...
There's a lot of roads are in the subdevelopments that we have out there that townships have not accepted them yet.
And, and we get calls on them all the time, because, I mean, as a commissioner, I'm sure township supervisors, who's gonna plow my snow? There's no, there's, I mean, uh, people buying these, they think, they're, think they're on a township road that's gonna be maintained, and they're not. I can name you two right now that are, you know, one in Aud, one in Lake Eunice, and one in, I think it's Audubon Township. It's not, the people have to, it's a significant, so, I mean, there is legitimate concerns, um, but maybe, maybe we can address those as we discuss this somehow.
And we have a couple already in our township that have tried and...
And we have a couple already in our township that have tried, and we're not taking those roads over either. So, it's.
Okay, anything else?
No.
We might question you in a bit, but anyone else wishing to speak on, on this topic? Anyone else? Okay, I think you've heard a couple of the concerns are, are making sure we have, it's basically a road as. Yes.
Because it's a dead end road.
Can you state your name and address for the, and come on up?
Mike Carey. I live on northeast Rock Lake Road. And it's, when they say ten lots, it's on a dead end road. So, you're really talking twenty. They all, when they come in, they gotta go out. So, you're talking twenty instead of ten. And then.
What do you mean?
It's an interesting way to look at that, but he's saying there's no.
We look at the cars.
They're not going the other way.
Everyone that comes in goes out. So, it's, it's, if the, it'd be a whole different story if the road went all through.
I don't, I don't.
It's.
I only go home and back one way, but.
I think.
I like the argument, but.
That's what everybody on the road said, we're going to have twice the traffic.
Each household, typically, they generates four cars going back and forth.
Ten lots?
Per lot. If they got to.
Oh, per lot?
If they got to.
Okay, right.
We dealt with that on so short issue that the study was. That's usually an average. Just depends on their seasons. You're not going to have that.
You can triple it at my place, in and out.
You got a lot of.
I think, I think the point is the increased traffic, that is a dead end, so they're, when they go in, they gotta come out. So. Any other input?
With all the hills and curves and everything, it's just, there's lots of curves and whatever. It's, it's a very dangerous road.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay. How, how big are the lots?
They vary, the, the first four vary from two and a half acres all the way up to five, and then they drop down, lot five is an acre and a half, and then they're red around an acre a piece for the last four.
Are they, are we changing zone too?
They meet the requirement of recreational development.
Okay.
At the planning commission, it was mentioned that this had been brought forward before and, and denied. Was it denied, do you recall, because of the road?
This has never been to a county board. It's, it's been to the township only.
Okay.
By both, Dell is a previous owner, and then Foltz is in Meadowland, Roy Smith and Scott Waldman approached this as well. There was, I think, a minimum of twenty-five lots, and I know one of those first requests.
So, there was significantly more lots?
Right.
In that request?
When Dell purchased this just a year ago, there was a total of ninety-some acres. Thirty-three of them has been sold through a boundary line adjustment with a neighbor to the north, which encompassed most of the lot and things of that nature. So, that was really a benefit to get that out of the development.
All right. Any more discussion?
Does there, so does there have to be improvements to the township road, John?
Pardon?
To, to use it for what it is? There's, you said there's some curves. Does there have to be improvements to it? Or, or?
No, I know it's brought out at the zoning, hearing on it, that it's somewhat the township's responsibility to maintain the present road.
Well, yeah, because you gotta, you gotta get to this property.
Yeah.
Property, if you buy property in America, you want to develop it. It's, it, there's place, we need, we need places for people to live. I learned during the Hog Barn deal that we, we upgrade the road as people move in, and that's how, you know, to cut, to cut that piece off and can't, no, we can't get in there, that doesn't sound right.
And I think we did, it was discussed at the planning commission that these will generate taxes for the township.
Absolutely.
To help them to improve the road or maintain the road.
Well, the township has the, has the authority to, to tax any benefiting, for road improvements, to tax any benefiting, any landowner on that road. There's a number of different options, how you can tax that. Person I feel sorry for is at the end of the road who's going to suffer the brunt of any tax in that area. I mean, if you do that, because they will benefit also, but they would be one, I don't know how many landowners total are in there, but one eleventh of road improvements. I, I would, I would actually require that bus turnaround or bus slash postal turnaround in, in either the development or.
It is in the development.
Right.
To comply with filing and zoning regulations.
If there's one.
I mean, that's, that's, so, one could, I mean, I think there's ways for the township to assess some of those funds back, some of those improvements back. If you have to do improvements back to the development, and then there would be an assessment on your property taxes for those ten lots.
Subordinate service district, but that, that takes a lot of hearings, a lot of.
It's, you have to have public hearings. Lake, or Audubon Township just did that for Bird Dog Lake. Yeah. And of course, you're not, you're going to have unhappy landowners as well as happy landowners. They get what they want, but.
Goes, our vote goes with majority, rules on that, and everybody has to be there, sure.
But there's, being it's already a township road, I don't know that we can assess, I don't know, can we assess the, any improvements to a new development going in there? I think that's, I don't think we can, I don't think we could do that even if we wanted to. I don't know.
I don't think we're supposed to.
Well, I don't know if it's existing. I don't think we can, and I don't know that it would be right in doing so. I think that would be, that would be the township find a way to, to do that if they wanted to assess that. And I think they could assess this development with improvements up to their part of that. And if you.
Not they'd have to check by attorney.
Well, you might have to go all the way, but I think you could certainly, you certainly could do it all the way to the dead end part of it. But when the road improvements are benefiting this, I think there's a way. Unfortunately, it's, it's not an easy, easy concept, but, anyway. Any other questions or any, Casey, do you have any other questions or? All right. Wish to the board?
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that, refer to discussion and bring it to a vote.
Affected by John. Any other discussion? I don't know, I don't see any way that we can, I don't know, any, I don't see any way we can support or move road improvements to, back to the development. I don't know that we can put that on it. I don't. There are some things that, you know, we'd like to see road improvements done. I think they're going to have to be done, but I don't know that we can stipulate that that should be their responsibility. I think we're maybe overstepping our.
That it's the developers' responsibility or it's?
The developers.
Yeah.
It's not, it's the township.
It is start with petition from the, all the landowners out there, I think it's fifty percent.
They would have to petition to have the.
Board and for a subordinate service district for taxing assessments back. It goes through the proper towns and hearings and so forth. And you can do a reverse referendum with twenty-five percent, and it brings it to another vote. So, it's, it's a long process, but.
It's doable.
Audubon Township, the Lakewood Township just accused in the last year. Audubon used it twice since I've worked with them, so.
But getting back to my point, I don't think that, I don't think that we can require those on a township road. So, we're based on, is this a reasonable development going in, and should we approve or disapprove? That's, and we have a motion and a tape and a second to approve.
And, John, because John's the road man, right? I mean, you, you believe that the road is.
I, I think just the township portion, the road with their prison blade contractor, with the little engineering and little additional blading can shape up the spots that aren't at twenty feet right now. We're just cutting, cutting that shoulder off a little bit and bring them in, so.
So.
Most of that is past some of this development too, so.
Oh, most of that is past where the development road will be?
Probably half of it.
So, it's, um, we're, we're done with testimony right now.
There's a map that shows, you have the map where it shows where the roads.
Kyle, do you, do you have a map?
I do.
We'll review. We have a. We have a.
I don't, I don't have that.
This is just development. Can I, let me look at that, Kyle.
We couldn't get, they didn't get on the screen, we didn't have anything to share.
Rock Lake Road. So, this is the turnaround at, at the very, by lot ten for the buses then, right?
Yep.
And that, and the turnaround is on the backside of, of the lake? So, the, how far is the turnaround from the lake there? Well, that, is it part of Rock Lake or is it?
Yep, it's a bay. That, that road goes out on a peninsula.
What is the plan for, what's the plan for the adjoining government lot three, Casey? Is that twenty-four point five acres in that bay?
Maverick?
There are, there are no additional plans at this time.
I look at lot, I look at the last, last lots being, I mean, get out on that peninsula, gets pretty, pretty tight for lots, but. On lot ten.
I think the smallest area on their buildable area is eighteen thousand square feet.
Fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-four.
Okay.
On lot ten. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you want, anyone else want to look at the lot size or not?
I've already looked at it.
Looked at it a lot.
Okay, anything else? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item. Anything else, Kyle?
Uh, no, sir.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, we are now going into a close.
Nope, we got Steve.
No, we got land and.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, Steve. Sorry, Steve.
Steven.
Want to add to Steve's agenda? I need a motion to add to the agenda a donation, donation for the Becker County tram.
Oh, yeah.
Entertain that motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dave. Seconded by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that'll be the, the last item. So, we have a solid waste contract assessment, number one C.
We missed something on.
Kyle?
Oh, on the retaining?
Zoning, didn't we?
Kyle?
Nope, the retaining.
No, they went to township.
No, this is final plat for the storage buildings.
They go to Detroit, one.
Oh, they go.
They go to the township.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. A review, resolution one C, environmental.
Does anybody have any questions on resolution ten twenty-three one C, solid waste assessment?
Any questions? I have a ton of questions. I think this is a significant change for Becker County. I think we're, and I think the committee has vetted it.
Looked at it, up and down and sideways.
So, I'm, I'm sure we're going to hear about this, because this is an assessment on your solid waste assessment, and it's increased, it will be increasing some people's dollar amount significantly.
It will.
Depending upon how much, how much it's used. We had some discussion, I mean, I even started asking questions in, in finance about how does it apply to, and there's lots of different scenarios that we're going to be probably having to work through. I think, I, but I said, I'm not going to try to revet this. It's went through committee, and if we're going to move forward with a, a volume or weight scale.
Yep, and it's fair. A lot of, a lot of people were being missed before.
Yep.
That, and that now they're not going to be, and.
And they will be not happy, probably.
No, they probably won't.
They won't, but, but they.
They have, they should be fortunate that they've got, that they haven't had to pay their.
Yes.
Fair share for a long time.
And, and they're, yeah, and when you explained it to us, yeah.
You know, there's scenarios in there though, and, and where you get into these, these specialty like, the short discussion we had was with churches. So, if you have a dumpster at a church, you're going to be assessed. If you don't have a dumpster at a church, you will not be assessed. I mean, you can go back and forth on those, and it's going to be difficult to, to say, to be, try to be fair. But you can give examples of both ways where you can say, well, this scenario isn't fair. Well, this one would be not fair the other way. So, the committee has vetted it. I'm going to trust that they know what they're doing.
But if we accept this, we can always go back and, and make changes to it.
Yes, correct.
We need. You got to start someplace.
Absolutely. I guess, in, in response to that, that's what I would look is, is as we go through this, there probably will be some more defining questions that will come up. And so, my first thought would be bringing back to our committee to hash through those questions and probably further define that. But the intent will be to try to spread solid waste cost back to those entities that produce solid waste.
Okay.
Based on volume.
And, and one of the things we could come back later on is we could change some of the point values too.
Sure.
All right. Wish to the board?
I move to approve it.
Most, motion by Richard.
Awesome.
Seconded by John to approve one C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item that we want to discuss was a county hunting cabin lease policy. Did you bring that up earlier in discussion?
No, we didn't. We, we just waited for this. This is, Mitch has gotten some calls. Currently, it has to be a structure built on the property smaller than so many square feet, and we have numerous people asking to bring, bring in their ice castles, for lack of a better term, but that type of structure. And we end up, started thinking about it, and we didn't feel that there was, I mean, we felt that the old concerns were old, old house trailers that were dumped in there, and then we'd have to remove them because there was expense to remove those old trailers back in the day. Now, now they're not, now we could, I think one of the stipulation that we suggested was they have to be removed, I mean, or at a regular basis. So, so they're not something that would be a, but otherwise.
Can't be a permanent, like, they can't stay there.
Yeah.
Year round.
It's just, we were just worried, you know, back then it was, and we had to dispose of some trailers that, and it cost us, because it's significant to get in and out of there. But now it's a different, we're in a different world, and we asked ourselves, why aren't we allowing them? And we couldn't come up with a good answer, so.
Which they're probably being used anyway.
Yeah, you can bring them up there today. You just can't, you know, this, this, I think, what did we talk about, leaving them there for?
Six months.
Up to what?
Well, it's had six months, we weren't talking six months here, but as long as they're moving them, I don't know how long they need to stay there, but they should be moved.
They can come and go as they want, but if, as long as they're mobile and can be.
Right.
And I think most people aren't going to want to leave them there.
No, most people are going to take them home.
Especially if it's an ice castle.
Yeah.
And, so that was our, Mitch, anything to add?
Oh, I just proposed a few things, but I think we can, so just wanted to have discussion about it, and then maybe to bring it back to NRM and further vetted if we need to for, but it sounds like. for the vetted if we need to for, but it sounds like something that we could allow. Uh, we just need to put some, we just want them to abandon it. And then we, like you said, take their cleanup cost then, so.
Mr. Chair, there is a rule, state rule, that talks about, uh, the occupancy or abandonment of, of property on state land. It says dispersed camps set up on state forests may be occupied by a responsible person for the camping party during the time the equipment is left on the land. A tent or other camping structures unoccupied by more than 14 days shall be removed by a forest officer restored, stored for 30 days to allow the owner time to claim it and then deemed abandoned or transferred to the custody of the commissioner of administration or.
So the policy is already written for us.
That's in the state rule.
And that's 14 days, though?
You, basically what they're saying is you, you can go out and camp, but take it with you when you leave.
Because if you were there, say you were there 14 days, you know, a lot of state parks have this thing. You could be there 14 days, then you got to leave for a day. You know, and then you can come back if there's room for you, of course, that's, but I mean, that would be one way to do that.
These are on actual spots that are leased.
Yeah.
So they have, they, we could extend them.
This is their.
This is their.
Their place to.
So I mean, we can extend that, but if, so, so if someone else comes in there that's not on a lease, they can still camp there for 14 days.
I, I don't think that's so much the issue is that if we want in our lease policy to allow somebody to bring in a travel trailer or a, uh, some, something, something else that's portable and leaving it there for an extended period of time. So that's part of the reason why in our policy we require a permanent structure. So that you don't have this stuff just abandoned out there looking like that.
Right, but if you're, if you are allowed one, one trailer now on a, on your lease site, you can keep it up there for six months.
They can do that. I mean, for, we have the lease term goes for 10 years and then we renew that with the lease, so.
But in our policy, should we have the, a timeline on those camp, those, let's just say ice castle. So we knew it's a new term, the, the, but I, I mean, I'd just like to get something done for this season for people if they want to.
Yeah, the biggest thing, it came up when we were looking to fill a vacancy out there for some time. And I called through the list and a lot of people said, well, if we can't bring our ice castle up there, we don't want to build a structure that's less than 600 square feet. So that's where it came about. People still bring their ice castles up there today.
Yeah.
When they already have their existing structures and, and those likely more times than not go home, so.
There maybe should be an exist, some sort of structure, even if it's a small storage shed even, and then they can bring their ice castles up to camp by it. Because then they'd be, kind of be marked that this is a, this is an area that has got a permanent or a long-term lease.
So currently the lease says that you must construct one temporary single-story residence.
So maybe we just change that wordage. That you do not have to construct a single story. Just take that line out. If you want to, we recommend to have a, a small storage building there at minimum, so you, we identify it as your spot.
It does say must construct one separate temporary non-residential outbuilding.
Yes.
Let's just keep that on.
Mm-hmm.
And say you can bring your camper.
Oh, I'm sorry. It doesn't say must, that's may.
Well, let's leave it as a may.
You may.
Let's leave it as a may because.
We could say recommend.
Some guys don't want to leave anything there and for good reason. It might not be there when you come back.
Let's just take the line out that says you must, must construct the cabin on it.
Yep.
And then have a time limit for when they can have their ice castle, for lack of.
You know, if you left it a month and then it had to leave and then you could come back whenever you wanted.
Well, let's just make it the, thank the hunting season for bow hunting. That's, I mean, that's about a.
September to December.
I mean, so just say, uh, you can keep it there for during.
January, January.
Yeah. Because then we get them.
You want to require a deposit on those or not?
Whatever, the same.
How do you hold, what are you saying? If they leave it or just the deposit?
No, so they, so they get it out of there.
Well, yeah, if they don't have it out of there, then we deem it as, the statute would be.
14 days.
Because you could get an older.
They'd have 14 days because.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes.
So when would you, like, that'd be kind of a nightmare. We, deposit's a good idea, but wouldn't it be kind of a nightmare if they, you say we could have it there 30 days. Now you take it all, put it back the next day and now you can pay another deposit.
No, we're saying for four months.
For four months. So you deposit for four months, then you.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's bring a policy back at our next meeting.
Yeah.
And approve it. But I think we're all in agreement that basically we should allow those to some, we'll come back with some recommendations.
Perfect.
Any other questions or item? You want donations? Do you make a?
Yes, we have three, name, three names that have some more money to donate.
No, we voted to put it on.
Brad Anderson, thousand, DJ for a thousand, and Craig Burgess for 125. Entertain a motion to accept the donations for the Becker County tram.
I move.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully those checks clear now that someone kept them in their dresser drawer so long.
Thank you.
If not, amend the motion to say if they don't pass, John will reimburse the dollar.
Are you closing now?
Do we make, do we need to make a motion to go into closed session or do you just?
Yes, we'll have to.
Can I run to the bathroom?
Yes, we'll have a bathroom.
If you hurry up, Richard.
I got to go there too.
If you hurry up, babe.
I'm going to.
Want to run?
Yes.
Really want to run?
Trot. Well, I think as, as far as the, the comp and class study goes, I still have a lot of questions that I would like to get answered before I would want to approve it. And it's, that, that's, I guess, what, whether that's what we talk about now or we have.
Yeah.
Mark, was that his name?
We have him on standby. We can bring him on right now. We can start discussing it here in open session. That's perfectly fine. That's up to you as a board. We're, we're kind of in limbo on what we should do because we're, we need direction from the board. But again, going into closed session has to do with our negotiations in the future with our bargaining.
Why did you recommend, or why did you ask that it be moved to the back of it then?
Only because I figured it would take a lot of discussion because people had questions. And, you know, we could save it just for, for that discussion. It had nothing to do with the closed session being in the, at the end of the agenda. They were, we always have closed session, usually at the end. And, uh, it was just going to be a much longer discussion, but we have him on standby. We can bring him in. We could start discussing the class of copper. We can wait another time, take it to committee. We really are looking for direction.
Well, I.
I don't know that there's any good thing to take to committee. I mean, I think, I think the, the questions that I, I have need to be answered by.
By action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I'm just going to say what my concerns are. We have two positions that are newly created that I don't know that, where they came from. We have our social services supervisors that I have said it before and I know that it was said that the, that Denise, this is how Denise wanted it, but I again will, I will not vote on a comp and class study if we're going to have all of our social services supervisors at the same pay scale because we don't pay everybody in human services the same. So we shouldn't be paying, the workers the same, so we shouldn't be paying the supervisors the same. That's my opinion. You know, I think that there's, there's more discussion to be have about, you know, I know, um, Mr. McDonald had sent a, an email about where we are going to be for our assistant county attorneys and how that's going to, um, how we're going to be able to retain them with that, that scale. I think as far as the placement of people, you know, that, that we can address through labor negotiations, but the, my concerns, I don't foresee that we can, we can address through labor negotiations. That needs to be, um, I guess I would like to see the, the PAQs for, um, specifically the assistant county administrator position that we now have. I would like to see the PAQs for, that it, that was used for the social services supervisor. The deputy human services director that we now have, that we never had before. Those are the concerns. You know, I, and back to the, the social services supervisor, we have, um, they're supervising people that are at grade two and four. Why, I don't understand why they are at a grade eight. Because they're, the requirements for that, those supervisors are vastly different. The decision-making for those supervisors are vastly different. The people that they're supervising are vastly different. Their job descriptions are vastly different. They should not be the same.
The, and you can go on different, I mean, you look at highway engineer, you know.
Yep.
And the separation of the supervisors over there are so, so minimal. So I'm, I was, I was not going to vote for, in favor of this. If this was a agenda item that we're voting on, I'm not going to support accepting, moving forward with the company. Now, we've got the, the study now and that's what was required. We needed to do the, the comp study for, for the, you know, for our unions to see and for our employees to see where everyone was. We can continue with our old band and grade. Use the knowledge that we've gained from this and, and adjust salaries that way. And that's where I'm leaning because I just, I just don't want to hire another agency, hire another company to do, you know, basically what we've been doing. I think it's an added, added expense. I think we have two full-time HR people now and we have the, uh, the company that we do currently. I think we can look at it that way. But I, I have reservations when we're trying, when we accept something like this and we hope, we hope that the, the appeals process will fix all these problems. I think we're, we're, I think there's too many problems to, to go into something that, that hope to address it through an appeals process that they have.
Well, but what, what, I guess what I don't understand is what are we, what, what is the appeal process going to be, what, going to do? I mean, my understanding is the appeal process is for each individual employee to appeal it. But if, if their position is not graded, what is that to appeal? Or what are we approving? Like, that's what I don't, are we approving the grade process? Are we approving where each position is? That, that's what I don't understand, what we're approving.
So you're asking a lot of great questions and that, that was the reason you had the agenda item there, to ask those questions and for Mark Goldberg, who you see on the create screen, to answer those questions. And so, so would you like to do that now, is to ask those questions and see what he can answer for you?
Yeah, I mean, yep.
Okay. Uh, Mark, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay, Chair, is that, we.
I'm, I'm, I, I don't think there's questions enough that you can answer that I would support moving forward today.
No, I mean, I think, I think, I think when it's, and I'm going to bring back the social services supervisor just because I'm, I know what each of their jobs are. I, I won't support this wage study when they are all on the same scale because I think we are greatly overpaying some.
Now, the wage.
Supervisors.
Yeah, we have a wage study and a, is it defined in more than one area? Wage, the wage study compared what we are paying to other areas of the same, but there's also a class. I mean, how they're put into those classes, it's kind of a twofold.
Mm-hmm. Where the individual employee is put on the steps. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, it's, it's more complicated than.
We, Mark, while he's here, can you do that? So, um, so is that okay?
Yeah.
We need to have that covered.
Certainly.
Mark, uh, we, we're, we're still in open session. You can hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Yeah, so the, the board has just got some questions. I know your role here was just to answer questions of the board. So we didn't know when you were going to come on board or whether you would come on board, but you're here now. And so I think it's just important for the board just to ask questions and for you to answer. So I'm just going to, um, maybe, Commissioner Jepson, you want to go through your question?
Yeah, specifically, um, I mean, I have a lot of them, but, um, the social services supervisors, currently they're all on the same grade and their individual job descriptions are very different. The requirements of the jobs are very different. The people that they're supervising are very different. So I, I would like, I, I don't believe that they should be at the same grade.
Commissioner, I think we, we spoke about this when, when I talked with you last time.
Commissioner, I think we, we spoke about this when, when I talked with you last time. And the reason why was because the position analysis questionnaire that was submitted by the social services director indicated they should all be on the same grade. I have no investment in this one way or another. I'm going off of, not off the job descriptions, but off the position analysis questionnaires that were submitted. And based on that information, that was the same. So if, if there is a concern with that, I would highly encourage you to talk to the social services director and ask her why that was sent in that way.
I think some of the concerns that I hear are those PAQs were, they were, I don't know if they were haphazardly answered or they weren't put in, they put more time into the job descriptions and they weren't used. Is that correct?
That is correct. I was going off the position analysis questionnaires. That's why we spent time doing that.
You know, didn't, didn't, and, and there was no, I don't know how to say this, but there wasn't any guidance on how to answer what. I mean, I haven't seen them, so there was, there wasn't as much thought put into those as there was into the job descriptions. And unfortunately, I think the, I don't know if the PAQs are not totally, they're just probably not complete is probably a, a good term, so. And I, I can't move forward in, with this unless we, I mean, through the appeals process, I don't think we're gonna, I'm not, I can't move forward and hope the appeals, individual appeals process will correct the, the sentiment. And I'm not saying it's real or, or not, that this is not, is not accurate, so.
And, and I think whether it was, there, there was a breakdown in communication somewhere. I think that maybe more information should have been brought to the board because there's, was a change in how things are now compared to how they are now. Or, or how, how they're going to be to how they are now. And whether that, I, I, maybe there should have been more communication with the board so that we, because it's, like I said, we have two positions that we never had before. And we have supervisors that are being paid at a level that isn't before. So I'm not necessarily saying it's you, Mark, as much as maybe it is communication along our end.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I mean, the only I'll offer if I, if I could is you've talked about a couple of positions that have titles that you, Commissioner Jensen, that you said you just weren't aware of. So when you look at that RFP and look at the steps of the process, it's, it, it very much says the PAQs are what are going to be complete and what is going to be evaluated by the consultant. The job descriptions are a subsequent step after the table is finished and the scoring is in place. The, you can give whatever title you want to those two positions that you had talked about, the social services or the assistant administrator. They would have scored exactly the same to our consultant because they're both positions. The HR director is an HR director position.
What, what in, what in those PAQs, there's, I have not seen the PAQ. Some, I'm only, I'm only asking the questions, but is there anything in that PAQ that gives her duties that an assistant county administrator would that give her any interim county administrator duties?
Well, I mean, I think that was one of the, the things that I've been continuing to bring up is the fact that if the county administrator is not around, either on vacation or sick or something like that, documents sit there and they're unsigned.
That has not been brought up since I've been here and that should have been brought up to the board instead of just assuming that that would be the duties of our HR director.
If you read the, in that job descriptions, those are HR director responsibilities that are in there.
What job?
I'm sorry, the P, excuse me, I'm sorry.
We haven't seen the PAQ, so we have no idea.
That's not, that's not the role of our HR to sign papers and to.
No, no, no. You weren't hearing me. The HR director responsibilities are in the PAQ. All HR director responsibilities, that's what's in there. So you could give it whatever title you want. It's going to grade the same because it's HR director responsibilities that are in there.
And we're not, we're not acting on that. That doesn't have any, you know, so we're going to look at that later. What was explained to me is that that, whether, whether we okay this study or whatever, that's something that we're going to look at afterwards. So that's not really part of this.
But, but one thing that Mark said last time is he did take, when looking at area wage comparison, there were deputy county administrators included in there for the wage.
There were.
Huh?
Yes, that is correct. They, they, they were included in there. Didn't really affect things too much. The, the values weren't, you know, too much different. But yeah, they're, they were all kind of in the same kind of area.
So that, 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 that's my concern is, is this, again, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna add on additional duties to specific employees, that should have been, I believe, brought to the board.
Commissioner, I can tell you, I just looked at the market data for those positions. We have four matches for the HR director. Two of them are for assistant county administrator, deputy county administrator, and two for HR directors. And the data is pretty close. I mean, they're not, it's not inflating things. I'm, I'm, I mean, I literally just looked at it.
So can you explain to me where, how, how do you look at the PAQs and how do you look at the market study? Like, how do they work together?
That's a great question. So what we do is we gather the market information. That's usually happening first and saying, okay, you know, where are these positions coming out relative to the market, where you are currently? And then we put together the evaluations based on the position analysis questionnaires. And we score them using the JET system, the job evaluation tool. You know, there has to be some points assigned to it because we've, we've got pay equity within the state and we have to make sure we align with pay equity. So we say, all right, this HR director might have 500 points. This social services supervisor might have 460 points. And we look at, you know, where it's a points coming out for everything. And then we're trying to look for clustering and saying what job should be in the same grade. So you might have five jobs between 250 and 300 points and we're going to put them in one grade. Another couple of jobs that are between 320 and 340 points and they're going to be in a separate grade. So we're looking to see how many grades you think makes sense within the county. And then where do we want to draw those lines and what, you know, how, how, how many points should be in a particular grade versus another? Normally they are a little bit smaller towards the first part of the structure. You know, grades one, two, and three might have like 25 points, but when you get towards the, the top of the structure, when there's kind of a larger variance, it's maybe 50 or 75 points. And that's a common structure within the state.
And how, how did we come to 12 steps instead of 10?
Honestly, I was trying to get you aligned with the market better. So it really doesn't matter how many steps you want to do, but when I was looking at where you, where your peers are and what's the average benchmark range, so the difference, the distance from the minimum to the maximum, your peers are about 35%, which is very, very common. So when we talked about, 35% from that minimum to the maximum, how far is that from that minimum to the maximum? Your current, what I'm proposing is a 37.4, so a little bit wider than normal. And with this, it's starting at about 3.25% for the first couple of steps, then dropping down to 3%, 2.75% and finishing for 2.5% from one step to the next for those last couple. So nine to 12 steps, as I think I mentioned my last time, is, is very, very common. So I ended up going with the 12-step structure just to put you a little bit wider than where your peers, but not hugely.
And, and do you look at private data at all, thinking of? I don't know if you got the information, but our county attorney, Mr. McDonald, had sent information about public defenders in comparison, in comparison to our county attorneys because our county attorneys got, according to our wage scale, they're above market. So they're looking at a pay freeze for, you know, a bit of while.
Well, I will.
Go ahead.
I was going to say the public defender change in salaries has caused shockwaves throughout the entire state. You are far from my only client that, that's freaking out about that. We really don't take into account a ton of public, of private sector information. We do have one survey source that we do use for that where we can get private sector information from the Economic Research Institute. But that's going to provide information on the aggregate within a city. So what is the average pay for attorneys within the city of Detroit Lakes or, or administrative assistants, et cetera? If you want to include private sector attorney information for that, I can. It will blow everything else out of the water. Because if, if attorneys want to go private, there's nothing you as a city or county can ever do to, to compete with that. There's, there's no way.
Oh, and I wasn't considering private attorney, private attorneys. I was, I guess, considering more the, the public defenders.
Yep. And for public defender stuff, again, that's, that's caused a distortion in the market across the state because of that huge increase.
So how do we address that huge increase for public defenders in, in our own, in our own wage?
Tension.
Everybody's trying to figure that out, honestly. So within that, you know, you can look at saying, all right, do we want to increase that particular grade? So the attorneys, hold on one second. Let me pull up where those guys are right now. So for example, the first assistant attorney is at a grade 11 right now. You, there's a couple of options. One is, do you want to adjust the grade for that? Pushing them up, for example, from 11 to a 12 or something along those lines?
The concern.
Or do you want to adjust the structure?
Not the first, the, the concern is the assistant, not the first assistant.
So the assistant attorney right now is a grade nine.
Yep.
And looking at that compared to the market, that's actually pretty, you know, it's, it's looking pretty good. It's about 8% above on the max currently. Now, again, everybody's doing a lot of changes for those attorney positions because of the public defender stuff. At 8% above right now, you should be in a pretty decent spot at the max. The minimum's right now 1% above market. But again, this is going to be changing. I can guarantee it, especially with those attorney positions. 1% above on the minimums, 8% on the maximum is not a bad place to be. If you change the entire structure and say, you don't want to push those grade nine positions up a little bit, you could do that and change the grade differential. How far is that from the grade eight to a grade nine? And push that up a little bit more. That's going to affect the other positions in grade nine and above though.
Can you explain?
But for that assistant attorney, right now we're looking at, did you, you're looking for that? So right now it's at a grade nine. It's like 515 points. If you wanted to push it up to a grade 10, again, the problem is if you push that up to a 10, there's only one grade difference between that assistant attorney and the first assistant attorney. Will that cause other positions to move?
Well, we only have one, one grade difference right now between the social workers, public health, and their supervisor.
Well, if you wanted to move that assistant attorney up to a grade 10, it's, it's actually not too far away from it. Bear with me for one second. Let me look and see what the difference is. It can be moved up to a grade 10. It's, it's just a few points away, honestly. If that's a concern, we can certainly.
A few points away from a grade 10?
Yeah, it's, it's actually pretty close to a grade 10. So if we make an adjustment to a couple of different factors, we can move that from a nine to a 10 fairly easily. That would put it again at the same grade internally as the chief deputy and the land use director. I would encourage you to think about what other change, you know, if, if you make one change like that, are there other changes that might be, as a, might, might come out as a result of that?
Brian, you have a question?
Mark, so is it possible that if the assistant attorneys understood the significance of the jet pack and, and maybe had a little more guidance on it and changed, you know, had a different response on a couple of questions that they could have been at, ended up at a 10 anyways?
No, not really, honestly. I mean, it's pretty close as it is. When we're talking about literally just a matter of five to 10 points, it's just, okay, you know, where do we see some of these coming out? For example, conditions or, I think attention is probably at the highest, at the highest for you, for you guys. But this is as much an art as it is a science. There, you know, could I bring a job from a grade seven to a grade 10? No, there's almost no way to do that unless you're completely redoing it. But for something where it's very close, okay, let's take a look and maybe we can tweak some of the points around some of this. And this is one example where that could be tweaked. It's not a manipulation of the system. It's just, you know, let's take another look at this. Because they are right now about, I think it's eight, five, eight points away from a grade 10.
How about, what, what, how about the highway engineering, the, the engineer?
Are you thinking you wanted to adjust that one as well?
I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at where his, where that lands compared to those above him. I mean.
The county engineers?
The county engineer. Is that what you're referring to?
The county engineer, yeah, I don't know.
So the county engineer is at a grade 11 right now. And it's pretty solidly in an 11. To get it up to a grade 12 would take significant adjustment. That, that one's not real close. So.
I just, looking at the, you know, what his, that engineering signing off on, on, it just seems like, it seems to me that it seems low, the final, I mean, to, to attract a, an engineer.
Well, I mean, we, there was a significant increase for those, for the county, county engineer.
And the other one is, I think you mentioned last time, separation of your salaried people to your, to your overtime people in highway. When you have your salaried people that close to, I think you, I think you mentioned that we gave bonus. If we get a bonus, you highly recommend it not giving bonuses because of the, to our salary to give them, to give them a pay bump if they work so many hours. Remember talking about the, the highway superintendent, John's old position and. Well, what are, what are the wishes of the board today? I don't know that.
If we're going to vote today, I, I can't support it. There's got, there's things that have to change before I can support it. I would like to, to look at things that we can fix and change and then, yes, I can support it.
Do, do you know, Carrie, did the, each of the human services supervisors fill out a PAQ? My understanding is each supervisor filled out a separate one, but only one was presented to, for the.
What, what is our? Do you want to put it on the agenda for our next meeting? Have a, have a conversation at, at humans, human services and, and see what the, the PAQs were or what they are? And maybe review them again and we'll have a vote next meeting, yea or nay, and, and our options if we vote, vote no, that, to, to adopt this. And maybe at our next meeting, we can see what other options we have, see what that would, what that would entail and go from there. But we have to, we should make a decision relatively soon.
Do we have a copy of the PAQs? We, meaning the county? So if I want to review them, you can email them to me? Is that something that?
Mark, the question was, are the PAQs open to commissioners' review? I mean, if we want to look at them individually?
Ultimately, I work for you guys, yeah. I mean, it's on the SharePoint site, so that's not proprietary information.
What is proprietary information for, for, on your end? Just how, how you class them? I mean, some of your internal workings on how you do that, is that correct?
What, what can be shared with, with the board is if you want to see all the details on how the points were, were determined, you can do that. That is proprietary, though, would not, that, that has to be kept just within the board and/or the group that, that's here. So those details, you, again, you can look at that. You can look at. You can look at all the details on how I match to all the jobs. But again, that cannot be shared beyond this group. So that is proprietary to us, but ultimately, you know, you are my client. You as the board are the ultimate responsible, you know, you're the ultimate arbiter, so you can look at anything. But I would, but say not to share beyond that group.
One thing we would like to do then is, I think, at our next meeting, to determine what the, what the ongoing cost for the county to, I, I think you had it on a previous, what the contracted amount would be to monitor this, and. And we'll, we, we have that, and I know, and I've seen, I forgot my sheet at home, but, so if we make, make a decision what that would cost us annually, and, and we'll look at other, if, if the board wishes, I think we should look at what our other options are if we decide not to. I mean, I think you've done a, a good job gathering the data, and I, I just think we want to be going in this with what our other options are and which one's the best option for us at the time, so.
Okay. Are there other questions? I can, I'm sorry.
Do, you said that you have a SharePoint site? Do we have, do we have access to that SharePoint?
Uh, that is, right now, just with Pat and Carrie, I think Amanda might have it too, but it is just a couple of people. So I'd rather not have a lot of people in the SharePoint site, but Carrie or Pat can send you any of the files that are within there.
Okay. And if there's no more questions, we will end this discussion, put on our next agenda, and go into closed session. Thank you, Mark, for your time, again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Do you need me for closed session or no?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, there's nothing else, we'll go into closed session pursuant to 13 D O 3 to discuss the labor negotiations, strategies, developments, or labor proposals. Conducted pursuant to 179 A O 1 to 179 A 2 5. Entertain that as a motion to close the session. Motion by Dave. Second by Erica. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Going into closed session, thank you.